You're still in your first full year. So you haven't done, you weren't here on the culvert work last year.
The what?
The culvert work.
Culvert work, no.
Okay.
I started with the paving stuff.
Okay. How you doing, Aaron?
Pretty well.
So I think it might be helpful, we're not gonna get started yesterday, but when you do, just to give very brief little background info, 'cause we have two new board members that have no clue what we're really, what we're talking about, and they will, I should say, they will have, they will understand because they live in town, they're following it, but not in the same detail as.
Yeah.
Just another minute, we'll get started. Six thirty, so we'll call to order the meeting of October 1st, the wrong for select board. First order of business this evening, we're gonna be hearing a report on the one-year warranty for the culvert work from Aaron and James from Oil Tanner Associates. We have two new board members for you to meet, these Knowles, and Miles, enter.
Nice to meet you. All right, so we are at the end of our one-year latent defects period or guarantee period for the culverts project. Last summer and into fall, the town undertook a project that included replacement of culverts at three locations, Pine Street, Willie Street, and at the lower mill. Pine Street and Willie Street were two corrugated milk pipe culverts that were replaced with essentially the same size culverts, thirty or thirty-six inch concrete pipes. And then lower mill was a big upgrade of a section of storm drain pipe that the existing pipe was, I think fifteen inches, and that was upgraded to a combination of thirty-six inch and thirty-inch pipe. So that's part of a project that, as the town has funds and other sections need to be upgraded, you can continue moving upstream, but that's the outfall of a major section of drainage for really the village area. The other two were just single pipes carrying perennial flow underneath those rows, but the lower mill was part of a drainage system. So whenever we have a project like this, there is, when we complete the work, we wanna make sure that while the contractor's out there, everything that's under the contract gets done per the contract docs. But then, once the contract is closed out and final payments made, you still have a one-year latent defects period, so if something comes up that needs to be corrected that's a result of poor workmanship or something the contractor did, that's your, you have this one-year period to have them come and correct it. It's a contractual obligation, so everything looks good out there. I took a look at all three locations before I came to make sure there wasn't something that we need to address or have the contractor address. It was Jay Park Grand Daughters out of Pittsfield, I believe. It was a challenging project, there were three tough sites for various reasons, and eventually, in the end, everything came out well, and we had no reason to believe that something would turn up, but you still wanna take a look at it. So I looked at the pavement, you know, that is in good condition, no appearance of settlement. All the vegetation is established, there's no signs of erosion. Culvert, looking down the culvert barrels, they look, from what I could see, straight and true, so I talked with George briefly, and I think he shares the same sentiment, that everything is looking good out there, so.
My biggest concern was the lower mill site. Everything was fine down there.
Yeah, so the lower mill site, that was a complicated site because the excavation trench ran next to what's called an A U R, an area and use restriction, because there was a former leaking underground storage tank there, so there were certain things we had to do with the pipe trench there to prevent water from that formerly contaminated area from flowing down through the pipe trench. That meant using a special material in the backfield, it's non-perimable, basically clay, which is great that water can't flow through it, but it's very hard to compact, and it was very hard to install around the pipe. So we said, it was a requirement of the contractor, the permitting, but we knew that, what we thought, there might be problems down the road because it was hard to get compaction, so we thought we might have settlement or other issues, and the town was aware of that, and it wouldn't necessarily have been the contractor's responsibility, it was something that, the detail that we developed, and we said, well, we'll keep an eye on this if it settles. Some pavement shimmy may be necessary, but it looks true and straight, and it seems to be holding up well, so.
Great.
Is Partridge Lane not part of this?
Well, it's part of this package, that was the year.
Before?
Before.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
They all seem to blend together.
They certainly do, it was the years of the culverts. We're still not really done, really, but.
You never really done your.
No, exactly, we're in a cycle. Miles, you have a question? So what's our, what's our next step? Why, we just get some forms, just to see if you sign.
So those forms are from USDA, the USDA was the, they provided a grant, or not a grant, I guess it's a loan for the project, so I don't know that Oil Tanner, and I should've mentioned that, I'm familiar with Oil Tanner, that's a firm I work with, but we can write a letter that says that we've essentially recommend that we move forward with closing out the guarantee period if we need to.
Okay.
I will say, I didn't look closely at those, I wanted to get out and take a look at the sites first.
Sure.
If there's something that we need to sign, we can.
Okay, I think it is, it's a.
What's the final inspection?
I certified that I've inspected them, so.
Down towards the middle. Have you inspected?
I think it's something that USDA did send us, but Audrey made sure she kept the attachment on every time when we were talking back and forth, so I'm not sure if it's something that was gonna be handled on your end of the off.
Yeah, so I'll talk to Audrey. Audrey Bolek was the project engineer for this, and unless you leave this this evening, we'll get this filled out and mailed back, and I took some photos, so we'll, I don't know that I need to do a formal report, but if I do, I can.
I don't, from what I read here, I don't think you do, but it just, it expired on November 1st, so just wanna make sure we have that. If there's anything that may be bolted up, it doesn't sound like it, so.
Awesome. No comments from any, I know that North Country Sider was vocal during construction, but they seem to be happy.
We haven't gone to complain, so.
Okay.
George, have you heard anything?
Haven't heard nothing on any of them.
Well, 'cause they all got tore up around by them, so.
Construction stuff, it impacts people and stuff.
We haven't, we haven't heard anything, George, from them.
Haven't heard nothing, no complaints on any of those projects.
Typically do if people aren't happy, so.
Okay.
So I guess we're good.
Great. So we'll get this filled out and mailed back, re-mailed back.
Perfect, yeah.
I don't know what paperwork is necessary on the town.
I think it's just that, actually. We'll double check with USDA, but I think this is the only thing we have left, so.
Okay.
It's a payment back, of course, but.
Yeah. Okay, great. So if, beyond this, if you need anything from us, just let us know.
We'll let you know, yeah, for sure. We appreciate all of your help.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great working with you, as always. All right, so the next order of business is approval of the bench of September 24th. Anyone have any edits? I read them and didn't see anything.
I didn't.
I didn't have any edits, I read them.
Also, you know what, didn't make it on here, but the public hearing.
Oh.
You forwarded them to us, I just don't have it on here, notice, so we'll approve them next week, then.
Well, I read those too.
Oh, you don't have it on the agenda, yeah, okay.
We just, I didn't put it on the agenda, so.
Oh, even though it's the same date, that's okay?
Yeah.
Oh.
So they're separate minutes, so. So if I consensus pulled up the 24th minutes, I feel the input. Before we do that, I was gonna start the meeting, actually, just to acknowledge the passing of one of our residents, Peter Mantov, who was a very vocal advocate in town for a number of issues, passed away recently, so wanted to send his family their condolences, and he will be missed. Next, order of business, community input. Any community input yet this evening? Seeing none. We'll start with the highway department, we're gonna skip around a little bit, we need to go to non-public for something to do with building, so we won't make you all leave and then come back in. You're gonna talk to us about your budget, amongst others, I'm sure. You're under POs for us.
I should say, good evening. Yes. Good evening. And good news.
Okay, so perfect.
The truck is back, and it cost, it cost under $3,000.
Oh, good, okay. We had approved up to five, right, so perfect, good.
I'd like to get a PO for $1,000 to get some crushed gravel back in stock, we used up that $4,000, all the other stuff, and PO number will be 1492, there is money in the gravel budget for that, so this is for Pike Industries.
Good gravel, how are the small of the two?
Don't want to do it, see. So what account is it hitting?
Going to get into gravel budget, account number, I don't have it. All I have is the last three digits, so. Four, three, one, two.
No, the account number, sorry. All right, I'll just put gravel. Okay, I wanted to move PO number 1492 to Pike Industries for crushed gravel for natural seed, is that what that is, or is it a thousand?
That's just to have some in stock, we got a couple of small projects left, we wanna make sure we have some on here, we don't have any left.
Okay, so then that will hit the gravel line.
I'll second that.
Any discussion of purchase order 1492? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
Oh yeah, I don't know what that's gonna cost, we probably will have a PO there.
We keep yours, right, George?
Yes.
Where did that go? We'll go in there.
Come to our septic tank, I don't know if it's ever been pumped at the trench in our building, and it's, we dug out the cover, and it's time to have it done.
Okay.
So I got a PO for two hundred, up to $250 for guy septic system in Berwick, and he came in cheaper, he bought 220, but he's not showing the side of the tank, so that would be for 1490 purchase order, and that managed on building maintenance side of the tank.
So I'll move a purchase order 1490, an amount of up to $250 to guy septic for septic tank at the highway.
I'll second it. I'll second.
Yeah, no, no, you're gonna say.
I think we have to start creating some kind of maintenances for these things. I'm sure the fire department hasn't had their pumps since it was put in for context, I don't know.
No.
But, yeah, did they really?
Yeah.
Okay. But, I mean, we should be having scheduled maintenance, there's a certain.
Yeah, I think that's.
You know, I'm not saying.
I found out that we went up into the storage, and I said.
I was surprised.
And I asked the previous, the one that installed the building last two weeks ago, and he said, I think the tank's over there, but they told us not to worry about having to pump, I said, well, I believe that's wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
Every two years is a effort for a house.
For a house, I mean, I don't know how much usage it is.
There's only a few people there all the time, but.
Right.
It's been nine years, though, ten years.
Yeah, it certainly overdo if it's been ten years, so.
So we, I mean, I don't know what the proper.
It wasn't, it wasn't any issue.
It was a failure.
Good now. We don't want it to fail.
No, we don't, but we do need to make sure that.
Yeah, that's the only two on septic, right, is highway and fire. I don't know, we should just toggle it and make sure it happens on a routine basis.
Yeah, the fire department did theirs.
I think they had an issue.
They did have an issue.
Yeah, okay.
Last year, year before, I've had a heck of a time finding where the cap was, so.
Well, so did we.
Yeah.
But they did, so.
Well, if they don't know it's right there.
They did, and you did, and that's a good thing. Okay, any other discussion of purchase order 1490? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
I wouldn't get four sheets of plywood, uh, plywood for the salt shed projects, and it went over $200, so it's $201.52 for Middleton lumber.
Okay.
And just like we had, probably the mares.
What are you putting it under?
Building mares. No, no, just PO.
Okay, PO number is 1491, Middleton lumber, for four sheets of plywood for $201.52.
It's amazing how much things have changed.
The present.
Oh my god, and since these hurricane seasons come, maybe we can change it.
Oh, sorry.
Any discussion of purchase order 1491? So what are the four sheets, do you think it'll be enough to finish?
Yeah, that's just to finish up the wall for that.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed?
And when we picked up the truck, it's at, the friend in Oregon, it hasn't been done.
Do you have the receipt, or tell, keep it with the?
Yes, with the PO.
I'm sorry, say that again.
We'd like to get a PO, but I'm not sure, I think it's gonna be Coastal Truck, but we need to get the front end alignment on that truck that we picked up today, 'cause when they put the new springs and step on the steering wheel, it was online, and it needs, you know, it needs to get done before we wear the tires off it.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be Coastal Truck and Autobody in Portsmouth, they're the only coast by that does the front end alignment, so.
Dover doesn't do.
No, no, big trucks.
No, big trucks, okay.
I mean, they can do a rough alignment, but Coastal does a.
They have the machines.
Yeah, like if you're doing a car, they only do it big time.
Big trucks, okay. How much do we think it's moving?
I don't think it's gonna be any more than 500, I think it's gonna be under that, but I haven't had one done in a long time, so. Kind of just happened to that. I tried calling them after, but I'd rather have this in advance, I think we need to get it done, I don't want everyone. We put two new tires on that this spring along with two new rims, so.
Right.
And now that we got the springs on, the geometry's all kinda, it needs to get done and streamed out.
How would your vehicle make this?
Very expensive.
Well, spending the $2,000 more on the springs, it's better.
Okay, that's fair enough, yeah, 'cause we have a budgeting for that.
Yeah, but I'm five.
Okay, so you do a purchase order for up to five, and if it's a few over, if it's 501, you can, you can still do it.
I tried calling them a quarter or four today, and they called it 330, so.
Unless it's objection, I mean, I think we should get it done, I don't want, you've got two new tires and two new rims, I'd rather.
And do the springs.
Do the new springs, that'd keep everything in good working order, so.
I've been getting a few cutting edges for plows and stuff like that, the maintenance budget, the trucks are in, they're being good shape, they won't get inspected.
Okay.
I mean, barring no major complications, we still have the machine sitting at vaudeville waiting for the valve to be put in, they got, so it's. And just so, while we're sitting here, the railroad crossing will be done next Tuesday and Wednesday.
To the fire department?
They will be notified for that, I got the email today, railroad's gonna take care of notifying the businesses, but I already did notify, I'm in case they forget, and the fire department needs, yeah, we'll be letting them know, I thought I'd see them here tonight, and I wanted to make sure, I talked to them about that.
It'll be closed for those two days?
Yes, they expect to be able to, they're gonna open it, the rail traffic overnight, so it can compact everything in, and then we, we work it the next day and pave, so they're hoping to be open by supper time on the tent, but again, weather permitting and.
How's this gonna affect C and J?
They, their regular buses will fit under the bridge.
Okay.
But the double deck is long, so he's probably gonna relocate them.
How many does he have of those?
I think he's got three or four of them now.
Oh, really? I thought he only had one. Okay, so he's aware of.
One of them's already tried going under the bridge, I guess.
So he's aware of this as well?
Yes, they are aware of it. Actually, Mike's got on the railroad, read off when I told him about that, 'cause we only heard through the grade line when Bob told us that night at a meeting a couple weeks ago, and I went to talk to him the day after, and he says, oh yeah? So he got me on the phone, called the railroad authority, and he got his answers, and saying, yeah, that's the plan, and he said, well, we need to notice that in advance, so that we have vehicles to move, so.
Right.
And that's how I started getting emails after that, I didn't find even what's going on, so.
I think they have a limitless space enforcement for.
Yeah. How does this affect you guys? Can you go under the bridge?
We can.
On all of your vehicles?
Yeah, we're all set. My concern is we need a ladder truck over there.
A fire truck, ladder truck?
Yeah.
I don't think.
That's why I wanted to talk to you.
Anybody put theirs over there?
No, no, not to, I mean, access, that's why I was, I suggested they open that old crossing temporarily in case they didn't get even out.
Are there any buildings that would require a ladder truck over there?
Church?
Yeah, multiple.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, that was just a, I mentioned at the railroad, I said, you know, you got an old crossing right up here that could be accessed if it had to be, I mean, temporarily.
Where is that? Is that the road that goes down by C and J?
By the T-Town?
By that house, by that house.
And there's only a matter of not very gravel down the road, I get it.
There's no other barrier?
Yeah.
There's nothing really there, I mean, that would at least get, if they had to get in.
Yeah, burdens, and then might be able to get over, yeah.
And that's what he said, they could put spaces, put ballast in tracks, and then open it up.
Open it up?
You know, just gravel, 'cause they have it there anyway for their tracks, the machines are here right now, 'cause they're reworking ties, so whether they go to that stretch, but that's why I wanted to talk to you.
Might have that conversation.
Yeah, you might be in, but if not, we should, we should definitely touch base with them.
I'll give them a call. Okay, this is for Coastal Autobody for up to $500 for front end alignment on truck two.
So I move purchase order 1493. In the amount of up to $500 to Coastal Truck and Autobody for front end alignment.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? What's the number?
1493.
I move, any other discussion of purchase order 1493? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Mark, can you, well, you have to move. So the railroad's gonna come next Tuesday and Wednesday, the ninth and 10th. Church Street Crossing. You're gonna close down the road for two days.
Yep.
I had a concern, I don't know if you do, getting a ladder truck in there.
Ladder truck?
If you need a ladder truck in there during this construction, what?
Sometimes you can, let's see, what's the bridge, 11-6 under that bridge?
Close in is 11, right?
On the church side, yeah. At that, I know I can get Dover's on the truck under there.
Okay, that was a concern of mine, 'cause I thought of probably temporarily opening the upper crossing.
Oh yeah, I see what you're saying, right over there by C and J, yeah. No, I know, I know Dover's on the truck.
That was a concern of mine.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause his is a hundred eleven.
I just better hope it's Dover that shows up.
Well, that's who will make the call for it. I'm sure, you know, I don't know exactly what South Hurwix is, but I'm pretty confident.
That might be lower.
It would fit under there. I will check on that when I.
But you guys will work that out, then, but we wanna make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, I knew they were coming, I will follow up and.
Okay, they email you?
Yeah.
Oh, good, we're gonna get it till after that stuff, so.
All righty.
I know a couple guys that work for the railroad, so it's kinda.
Would you like to do highway or transfer first?
Actually.
We have another one for us? What else do we have?
An employment. We have, somebody wants to work Saturday, that they transfer.
Okay, have you already interviewed?
We interviewed, Gary Karen, he lives here in town, has lived in town.
Oh yeah, you told us this was coming, okay.
So I don't know what your thoughts are on this, so.
You've both interviewed him, you're comfortable with having him?
Yeah, I'm comfortable, I've known him for a long, long time.
Any objections on the side of the table?
All right, and he's, and he's willing to work Saturdays, of course, he works very well, but he's.
Like people that are willing to work on Saturdays?
Yeah.
Wonder if you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of Gary Karen to work at the transfer station.
Second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye, get everything scheduled, Carolina.
Perfect, get it back, done checking all that, all right.
How do you spell his last name?
C-A-R.
All right, now we've done that. Highway transfer first. Why don't you transfer, that seems to be the shorter and easier one, right? Until we get to hauling, of course.
It's a little bit all over the place in a way, due to the changes of single streaming to full recycle, so we get some unknowns.
All right.
The known, that we know, that we know it's gonna cost $225 per haul, when we change the triado. I think we budgeted for, half of it was for two and a half hauls per week, that's total, start with the MSW, the single stream we have now, and the demo. Sometimes it's two demos and one MSW, sometimes it's one single stream and one MSW, some weeks it's nine. So it's kind of a crapshoot, actually, just not a good way to have it, but it's the only way there is, 'cause it's no, no exact science to it, you know? Two weeks ago, I don't think we came close to filling the demos, they didn't get all, they didn't need to be, so, but I had one week where we had four, I was all, two demos.
So over, so over the year, it averages to about.
Yeah, pretty much does, yeah.
Per week?
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we start at the top with a 10?
Sure.
So you're proposing an increase to this because of an additional person?
Looking, let's see, we had three as a whole last year, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. We had three as a whole, we dropped down to close to one, and now we're back to two and a half. I'm proposing four, now, in that four, it's actually, it's more, somewhere over there. Three people full-time, if we can get back to that point.
You mean part-time full-time?
Yeah, as full-time as the transfer station is, sixteen hours a week per person. The fourth person would be, it could be a fourth person all the time, it could be one of these guys working an off day, doing either, well, we know we're gonna be doing recycling, so we're gonna be doing some bailing in that, so it could be, it could be two people working part-time one day, it's just, it's not so much four people as it is three full-time and one part-time, if you will, 'cause we've got, we can't bail during the days that we're open, that the transfer station's open, just because of the flow of people in and around. We might be able to do it on Mondays and Wednesdays, but not on a Saturday. We can bail the codwood on Saturdays, 'cause we have to. The other, the recycling is just basically collected until we get. The other, the recycling is just basically collected, until we get to a point where we have enough that we can now bail. So it means I'm gonna bring someone in to bail. I mean, it could be me and one other person, it's most likely gonna be two people to do the baling. But they might be working four hours, maybe a week, but this would allow for eight hours a week of baling time. So, like I said, it's, whether you wanna call it one more person, or whether you wanna call it just extra hours for the people we already have. But it's kind of confusing in a way.
But, but you're gonna need that.
Yeah, we fig- we figure we will, cause when we, when you go to recycling, it's manpower intensive. Right now, the customers come in, they throw their stuff in the bin, we don't touch it until the truck comes and hauls it off.
Right.
In recycling, they'll throw it in a bin or a collection area, but then we have to physically take it out of there. With the skid steer is how we have it designed. Take it out, put it in the valer, compact it, it's, it's more time, it's.
So why don't, why don't you just take the, the three people and increase one day of time for them, instead of having it be four people?
I still need, well, because right now we're budgeted for three people, three days.
But why can't you take three people, four days?
We could, it basically is the same thing.
Right, but having it say four people gives you the authorization to hire the fourth person.
Then we can.
Where if, I don't, I don't know what your staff now, if they want to work more than, or if they can work one of those others.
They will, they will, I've got, I've got a couple that will work.
I don't know how you feel about that, but it, it's kind of.
It's not a problem with me, if you wanna call it that way.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think if we can frame it in the, the number of hours needed, and however many people work to do it. The bottom line shouldn't change, right?
Right, yeah, the, yeah, the number should stay the same, yeah. Is there, is there a number of hours per week someone can work before they are considered a full-time person? I don't remember what the.
Yeah, it's thirty, thirty-two hours, I think.
Okay, so we're only sixteen, so we shouldn't be getting close to that.
Shouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, I don't wanna get close to, to that number, cause I don't wanna have anybody kick into a different category.
Right.
And it's not gonna be every week anyway.
True, true, so if you hire the fourth person, then, then it would just be when you need them versus using the people who have, who may want to have the extra hours.
It would be a good backup, if someone's out.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, and it, I mean, I probably won't hire a fourth person, but I need to have money allocated. So if I wanna use one of these three guys to work more in the baling, which I know we will. For instance, last year we used two of them to do, uh, chipping, but we had a line for chipping. I don't have another line for additional attendance, or baling, or.
I think you're better off than trying to sell it, saying, you said three attendants with additional hours because of the.
Okay.
Additional responsibilities posed, uh, because of having to go away from single stream back to the old system.
Should we add maybe a line in that says baling? And plug a number into that?
Knowing how much it's gonna be.
Yeah, I think you'd be safe just leaving under attendance and the hours, I think, because, I mean, you could come into a situation where you're fine with baling and something else comes up that you need them to do. So.
Yeah, keep it open and it is, yeah, don't give it a title.
I think you're safer that way, to be honest with you.
But the note, the note can say to accommodate.
Okay.
That, yeah, I think, I mean, it could accommodate another part-time person if you needed to, but I, it's hard enough just to keep, uh.
Yeah.
Two people there, let alone.
When we had, we had three as a rule.
Right.
And then we had one part-time on Saturday.
Right.
So, okay.
So your payroll taxes and all of that have been reflected with the increase of hours?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 and then I have one employee that has been there quite some time.
Yeah.
I'd like to give him a little extra money if we could, and that's, that is reflected into all this, that I'd like him an extra dollar, so. And that's where it says after the right there, four dollars for.
Senior number?
Yes. Yeah.
What are they currently?
Eleven. And I keep the other two, keep the other ones at eleven, and just, this is the one that's been there the longest. And to be honest, he's really stepped up to the plate.
Right.
Since everything's happened over there. So.
All right, so payroll taxes are reflective of the.
That's supposed to be.
Increase in that line, that's fine, health and safety's remaining the same?
Yep.
Uniforms?
How are you set on your, any of the shots that you need to have as a?
I'm set, I think I've got one or two other guys over there, like, gotta see what Gary needs, Paul, I think he's up to date with the other Paul, I think he's.
That comes out of his mind, so.
I know, I'm gonna make sure he has enough, if you have new staff.
Yeah.
No, no, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that number is what was inherited from last year, so, and I don't think any of that has been spent. So it'd be well off, probably to get that done now.
When we started that, is it, what do you get for, do you get the hepatitis B?
Yes.
If you might, so that's a, is that still a three-shot series? So you might wanna start this, if you haven't done anything, and then go into the next year?
Yep.
Okay, so uniforms and cleaning?
Uniforms we split off, because last year, uniforms, there was no uniform line in highway.
Right.
So we've now split this off into part highway, part.
Okay.
Yeah, part transfer.
Yeah.
And everyone to transfer right now has exactly what we're wearing.
Okay.
So we now have stripes with everybody, they're all identifiable, and, uh.
And they're mandatory, right?
Yeah, 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 I only had one person I had to talk into it, and he came right on board, that's our longest person. He's got them now, we got them as a partner, and he loves them, so, yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Supplies, we're increasing supply line? What's the, uh?
The increase is gonna be some of the office supplies and whatnot that's needed. We've got some, it wasn't really an office there, you know, it was just scattered, so, uh. One thing I could use over there, as opposed to plugging into his all the time, is a really cheap printer, for the laptop that the PD gave us.
Right.
I think I can buy a lap, I think I can buy a printer for. Fifty to a hundred dollars?
Yes.
The ink's more money than the printer's at. Yeah, cause if I'm over there doing, doing my paperwork, I've got the laptop, and now I gotta run back over to the highway and plug in over there to be able to.
Where is your office?
There is an office over in the, over in the, uh, transfer station.
Oh, oh, I thought you were, you were talking about.
Yeah, no. So that's primarily where that is, and just to beef up some of the, some of the office side of it. Also, there's some cleaning supplies and things we can use for around the dumpsters, to help get rid of rodents, and we haven't had any issues, but I wanna keep it that way. So.
Telephone?
Telephone, we, we had a joint loss meeting today, and I brought up to them, as far as eliminating that line, getting rid of the telephone altogether. Everybody over there has cell phones.
Yeah.
There, that number is not published, uh, as far as the number in the transfer station. So the thought was, we, we have two thoughts to it, one is to get rid of that, get rid of the phone that's over there.
Right.
Beef up the phone at the transfer station, cause you can get cordless phones.
And we can reach over there.
That would reach over there, so have a, have a cordless one over there, so it's still on there. And takes some of the savings from eliminating this phone, brings me back to the computers, we both have the same computer, we have one modem that plugs into it. Now, he's online, I need to get online, I gotta borrow his modem, plug it into mine.
Right.
Go wireless at the highway building, and it would reach over at the transfer station.
So the saving.
So save some money on the telephone, get rid of that, get rid of the wireless, the.
Internet.
Yeah, the, the modem that plugs into the computer.
Yeah.
And just go to straight wireless in the building.
Cable already in the building.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so there you go, wireless modem doing where were the, the.
That pretty much.
Power that you put in.
Yeah, and it pretty much is a wash.
Cause it runs that every month.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's, I think it brings it only to zero.
Yeah. So, I mean, that was after, this was forwarded today, so.
Okay.
That's where that idea came in.
Mold that over.
Yep.
And for regional tipping?
This is where it's all kind of up in the air.
We have a meeting, uh, coming up soon.
Yep, Carolina didn't have any real numbers to plug in at all.
They haven't told us yet.
Yeah, and along with the trucking side, well, the trucking side of it's gone anyway.
Yes.
So.
So that's a good thing, that was, that's gone, but it doesn't mean we're not paying to have it.
Well, yeah.
All somewhere.
Brings us down to the next line.
Right.
Can I go ask, I'm sorry, can I go back to the telephone?
Sure.
I, I have a, I'd rather have a hard wife telephone, that's me, but are all of the, are, do you have Comcast?
Yeah.
So.
In the, in the trend, in the.
So why can't you get a Comcast phone line? And it would probably Comcast belt.
We already have a phone in the office over there.
Of.
Comcast?
I don't know what, what our phone lines, they'll go through, it's a town phone.
Or is it, is it, um?
I think it's the other company, I can't remember.
Is it Brincen, not Brincenchild, no, um?
Not, they're using it, they use Big Ball, they're not very well known.
Okay, so.
Well, I'd wait, uh.
But we have.
I'd like to say something, I may, on that phone, it was installed with the understanding that you had to have whatever company put the line in. For a year.
Oh, that's right.
And it was just recently done.
All right, so we may be.
And the year is probably up by now, but.
Oh, so you can change providers, right, you're saying, okay. Well, I just, you know, I don't know what you guys, but I don't have good cell service in Rollinsburg at all, and you have good cell service down there?
Right, we're right into the tower.
I know, but it depends what you kind of plant, what, who you have, right?
Right, but, but they're suggesting getting a, a wire, a cordless telephone.
Cordless phone from us, off our same line, that we have at the garage.
To, to bring over to the highway department.
He said that they all had cell phones, that was my concern.
Oh, everybody does, but put, change the.
Put a handheld unit from our phone, just an extension at the transfer station off our phone.
Okay, you're not gonna rely on cell phones?
Oh.
No, 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 no.
Then I'm.
Okay.
My concern though is.
On the, on the phone, we can put a message for the transfer, this is wrong, to the highway end, and transfer station, leave a message, the hours on it and stuff.
And you think the base station in the highway garage is gonna reach over there?
We're gonna try it and see, we've got two.
We do it.
We have two cordlesses right now in the highway.
Save it work.
And I wanna take one over there, into the little office over there and see.
They do have now, they're more strong too, so.
Maybe the only issue we have is both buildings are metal-clad buildings.
Right.
And that's where the, the signal kind of, so.
I, I would be concerned.
We're gonna do a little test on it.
But if you test it and it works, then, if we can make it work, then we'll, we'll, we'll talk about some more.
Yeah, before we decide what we're gonna do, we're gonna make it work.
I mean, worst-case scenario, we're still hearing the budget.
Right. So in land pre-regional tipping, we need to put on hold, cause we don't have the numbers yet. Trucking co-op is gone, which is good, but that brings us down to line eleven.
Yep, trucking, and that's where we have two and a half hauls per week.
Yeah, oh, we talked about that.
Yep, and that's plugged in there at twenty-nine, five, twenty-five, uh, twenty-nine, five, fifty. So.
And the trucking recycling?
We're getting, getting away from the single stream. So any trucking we're gonna have on recycling is gonna be done by us.
Right.
Um, once it's baled, both, you know, the metal and the aluminum goes to railway.
They both will go over there?
Yep, in the back of the dump truck.
Okay.
Take it over there. Yeah.
It's actually motherway.
Yeah.
Have you taken the glass?
The glass, the glass is going to weight field, we've had one load up there already, and then the truck went down.
The weight field?
Um, I'm kind of anticipating getting another load up there this week, and that should empty out our glass bin, for what we've collected over the past eight weeks, probably.
So eight weeks?
Yeah, yeah.
Which also reduces the, uh.
Single stream. About seventeen ton, or seven, yeah, seven, we took all these on, right?
Forty, no, forty-seven, half of that.
Eight thousand pounds, so about sixteen thousand pounds will be taken up there, that we're getting rid of at thirty dollars a ton. Versus sixty-five plus.
Right.
In the single stream, so, so there's a thirty-five dollar savings per ton, right there.
Okay.
And looking at the bills, it's sat in a reflect, so.
Positive. How about, all righty, equipment maintenance?
We're adding that extra valer, so it basically just adds another, um, adds another six fifty.
So that will cover the, the maintenance agreement that we have, okay?
Yeah, that adds another one to it, so, and we probably won't have to have that maintained for at least a year, cause it's coming in all refurbished. So, so there may be a positive left in that line.
Disposal of metal tires, et cetera, that should be offsetting revenue for that one?
Yep, yep, the next two would just basically offsetting what we had from the year before, so, I mean, it's just the same numbers. And then we're down to brush chipping.
Uh, cooperative closure, well, that's, that's, that's not gonna change.
I think that's a given number that is placed forward. The brush chipping, we did that in-house last year, it worked out fair, um, I'd like to put it back in for this next year. So if, if I, if we can have the time and have the guys do it, great, if not, I wanted to be able to have the company come in and just get rid of that. So, we.
Yeah, it started out good, but then they were getting.
Kind of got overwhelmed in the weather kind of closing, I mean, you don't wanna do it on ninety-five degree days that are hundred percent humidity, and we had a couple of little minor issues that, you know.
Were they, um, issues related to weather or, or?
Personnel.
Personnel?
Yeah.
Personnel issues?
Personnel issues.
And wanting to do it as often as it should've been done.
And I think part of it too, we had quite a, quite a few big storms this past winter, and it kind of came to pass with the others too, so.
The waste disposal day is the waste disposal day, that's what we get charged for actual use of the pass.
Yep.
And the freon?
Freon is, we have two hundred in there, I'm still waiting on, on a callback, to find out the exact number. Past years, all the, anything I had freon in, so it's air conditioners, dehumidifiers, uh, refrigerators, freezers, they were hauled as a unit.
Right.
Off, gone.
Right.
We can have a company come in and pump off the freon, for so much per unit. And then they leave the units with us, all pumped out, all clean, we kick them over it to metal, we get paid for the metal.
Right.
So. Yeah.
We've given it away before.
Yeah, we, yeah, they were taking the whole unit.
You never checked it before.
Yeah.
And then they go out and make, we did so, perhaps.
Right, so.
Okay.
So, I've got, you know, there's a few unknowns, some is the hauling, of the different fees. Uh, one is what we're gonna, what's gonna happen with paper, that's one of the other, paper and plastics. Paper, there's a little market for, plastics, there's no market for. So it's gonna cost us still to get rid of plastic, it'll cost us money to get rid of the single stream, but we're pulling all this stuff out of the single stream, so once again, we can also bale the plastic and get rid of it as a lump, as opposed to a lot of air in it.
Right, right, right.
So.
Yeah, hauling, uh, you know, container full of air.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we packed it.
Quarter full of air, yeah.
We packed that single stream down numerous times a week with the backup, so we're trying to get. We were on, Wednesday will be what, day number four, then it goes last Wednesday, Saturday, Monday, and Wednesday of this week on the single stream. So it's four days of collecting. And if they were packing now, we probably had, eh, maybe that much room in the top of it now, but for Wednesday, that should be fine. So by next Saturday, it'll be emptied, before Saturday, be emptied and ready to go again. So, we kind of switched to using a largest container for that, which I think is a fifty yard, it seems to work out about.
Are there any questions for, uh, the transfer station portion?
With the recognition of this amount of unknowns, so.
Yeah, we've been in, talking to Caroline pretty steady on this, and let me hit that down. Uh, there's also.
Split the, his wages, which.
Oh, yeah.
Part of it was the transfer station.
Say that again.
His wages will be split, taking some off of the highway side and put into the transfer station side.
Yeah, I don't think she didn't put that on the transfer station.
She did, and. Or no mine.
Yeah, it's on yours.
Line thirty-one on the other page.
Okay, it's just not reflected on this one, but that's right there.
That's what you're proposing that you're gonna do.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we're bouncing between the two of them, so. Uh, the only other thing Caroline mentioned in twenty to bring up is, like, on the year-to-date, um, expenditures for this year, uh, we've still got some bills outstanding with shipyard that they, that haven't been paid yet. They haven't billed us yet.
I've just filled out something in the folder.
Okay.
Just not paying them.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, there's some issues between them, so, yeah, so she just wanted me to mention that's not reflected in anything.
Okay.
Here you go, as far as what's, might be left.
Alrighty.
Yeah, I don't think they do this any great favors, somehow.
All right, George. I thank you.
Yep.
Uh, you want to start the talk?
Yep, please.
Okay. It shows change on my salary of three thousand. It's actually gonna be two because you already gave me a raise previously.
That's what you're gonna assume?
That should have been changed. Full-time staff had proposed raising Ed's pay two dollars an hour. I mean, the amount of money we've been saving on these projects and I know it's our job, uh, and that's just a, to get them up to where most highway departments around here are.
Okay.
And, and part-time staff, we just wanna increase hours from, so we get more done in the summer, uh, summertime, with summertime projects.
Okay, so before I move off of line four, so your, your, your rationale for the, the increase for the assistant road agent is a market increase, so market adjustment?
Yeah.
Or? And so, I'm sorry, line five, part-time staff reflects?
Make the increase the, up to twenty thousand, so we have more available hours to work, uh, projects that we have in the summer besides our flowing.
Okay.
I mean, this year, we've got quite a few projects done with the three people. We could have used a third, a fourth occasionally and we just, you know, trying to keep an eye on what's going on with the budget, so.
So this isn't just a spinny's position. This is multiple people's position?
Like, when, when we could use an extra, you know, we could use a mix of people on somebody's project. I mean, we're doing it with three people, sometimes fourth, fourth person and fifth person. I mean, it doesn't hurt to add like.
So this is multiple.
Doesn't necessarily go with the person, if it's.
It's a multiple, but it's, it's spinny's in that line, right?
Yes. And, uh, I noticed that some of the retirement's not in there, so that's not reflected. Those are the changes that she's, she's working on.
Okay, so the increase for, in line five is for additional hours, not necessarily additional?
Right, it's more hours and, you know, not knowing what it's gonna be like and, you know, it's for more people to help us with the summer project besides.
So we rolled, I can't remember, apparently we did, we rolled in, um, winter and summer.
Combined.
Uh, part-time staff into one line, yeah. No, it wasn't.
No. It was, it was confusing, it was confusing, you know, having a separate, separate hours.
Okay. And so, always say the payroll taxes are reflective of the, and the retirement system.
Yes, supposed to be.
Changes are.
You're on retirement, are you two, right?
Yes.
Safety equipment?
I didn't change that, that nine fifty. And my question is, what is it for?
The safety equipment?
Is it for me to buy some?
These are, these are, no, 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 these are, um, like your, um, well, let me just make sure, I think it should feel like your boots and things like that, isn't it?
See, the equipment is. They have boots?
That would be under the uniforms, so.
I don't think so. I don't think, I don't think we do.
I think it was under there, and we didn't get our boots this year.
Uniforms are, are like the, are the actual ones that, like, the rental stuff in the laundry open. I'm not arguing that shouldn't, it might make sense to be under there, but I don't think they are. I think it's under safety equipment because we pay for.
Maybe we should put.
We didn't get our boots this year, that's why it's not used.
On there, so then there's no question going forward.
Well, they used to be in the, in, in the notes section. We would just put, um, um, boots and, um, gee, something else comes out of there, um. I think, um, mostly boots, I think, to be honest with you, for.
Would that be a medicine cabinet? I mean.
Yeah.
Why, I mean.
Yeah, we'd come under there as well.
Get over, go on that check, that's probably obligated by most of the.
All right, but yeah, that's, most of it's, we should have linked it out of that.
We didn't wanna change, we didn't change that line, but that's why.
And at one time, it used to be, um, it didn't, no, the next line down is preventative health, that's for all those shots.
Mm-hmm.
That, um, that used to be combined under, I think.
They broke that up.
That's, that's one thing, the AED, the battery and stuff would come out of that.
Sure, that would come out of there.
Those are our items, go better.
Okay.
Okay, so who's?
Gloves?
Gloves if you need and that sort of thing, yeah. Alright, so, uh, so we've got preventative health, we know what that is. Telephone and cellphone, no change there?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna cut, if we can cut that internet out of that one, that'll save it and put it towards the other, so we're not gonna raise that amount.
Right, it shouldn't, it shouldn't increase, it would just be offset. So instead of renting the, the card every month, we'd, we'd get a wireless modem, okay. Because you already have internet down now.
Right. Uniform, you see an increase because the uniform line was underneath the transfer station. Now we're splitting that.
Okay.
And that's where that increase comes.
Okay, so it's, it's, okay.
Your supply line, we've increased, as you see, we're up a little bit on it. I believe some of that could be transferred to building maintenance that was in that, that we, that was under the supply. I raised it up a little bit, it, for, uh, you know, different, I shovel and stuff like that that we need.
So when you replace the light bulbs down at the highway department, do you consider that supplies or building maintenance?
I've been putting it under supply, but it can come under maintenance.
Okay, well, no, I'm just wondering, so that would be part of the reason why it's up?
Yeah.
Depending on what was coming out. I'm not arguing, I think that might be part of it, right? Things like that.
Yeah, there's some things that were, just don't put in the right category. In the equipment line, you'll notice that we still have, uh, over three thousand dollars left. Almost four thousand dollars in the equipment line left. And you'll notice next year that we have four thousand dollars in line striping machine. Well, that fourth, I got a price on the line striping machine that we can save six hundred dollars if we can purchase it this year. Or wait till, but I'm just asking, I'm sure that we have the money in the, in these items.
What I would suggest, George, is to hold off.
Yep.
Until we get closer to the end of the year.
That's, that's what I would, that's why I just wanted to bring it up, so that that would reflect not having that fifteen thousand in the increase on the.
So you've got your trailer, you've got your, your explosive, explosion-proof cabinet, right? Do you get your fridge?
The what?
Your small fridge?
We have a fridge door in it.
Perfect, then you have to buy it, perfect. Okay, I was just saying, what, what, we had for notes for last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Or this current one. Okay, so if you can hold the line on equipment, you don't need it somewhere else, then we don't need to reorient it somewhere else.
Gonna have to, uh, cutting edges, but that'll come under vehicle maintenance.
Right.
So.
Okay.
We fear the maintenance, age of the fleet, I just, we, we raised it up a little bit. That may not have to happen. Uh, we'll see what. Fuel, we didn't change anything. We're holding our own right now.
Okay.
Signs, I didn't use it all, but there is some signs that we're gonna need, so I kept it at the same.
Have you, you've used some of it, just not all of it yet?
Yeah, we got a little bit more to, we get some more signs to get, so.
Okay, perfect.
Line striping, I put back in there if we happen to get a machine or if we can borrow a machine, I put it in for paint.
So you pay for the paint?
But you put the line striking in the equipment, so, but it.
No, well, I, I have the line striking machine under equipment.
Right, right. But either way, you would need the paint.
Where do we, um, pay for that now? What?
It was, uh, this year they eliminated. We didn't do anything this year. That's, and it's time to get some of these crosswalks painted and stuff. We're behind on crosswalks.
And these aren't the, like, the long lines, like, on the road, do you, the, the smaller, like, the parking stalls?
All these stuff downtown, your parking spots, your, your stop lines and stuff that.
How much would that cost if we had to contract it out?
They had it in, I think it was four thousand, you had it in.
Something like that. Buy their own machine for the same.
Okay.
And after one year, yeah, it was a.
Yeah, you, you.
On the properly maintained, that was the last first, I believe, quarter, two years.
Right, with the amount of stripping we can do in town, it, and we need to do something at the transfer station as far as line and direction and stuff, you know, so that's.
It's sometimes a free-for-all. So, as both of us have been working, then we'd be kind of studying the pattern of the cars and kind of getting it in mind, it may be three separate lines, lanes and get that streamlined.
Alrighty, tree maintenance?
We have money left to do a few trees. Uh, we haven't used it all this year.
You're proposing an increase? Where, um, do we have a list of trees to?
We have some trees that, we've got a couple of big trees that are gonna come down, and, uh, there's one on General Sullivan that's, God forbid, I don't know how long that's, I mean, it's still standing, but it's getting in rough shape. And I'm gonna have Ed come out and look at some trees again and see what needs to be.
Yeah.
But you're not doing it?
Not, not, nothing to do with power lines.
Not to say.
Okay.
Ed from Urban Tree.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Different Ed.
Different Ed.
I mean, Mike's.
I'll, I'll cut trees, but I won't cut trees.
Mike's gonna cut the trees that we have in the park across from the five, six, there's five or six dead ones there, and we can drop them ourselves and get them cut up.
Okay.
So.
That's good.
But the stuff along the road with power lines involved, we're not getting into that. That's.
That's also good.
Beyond our.
Okay, uh, where could we leave off? Sanding gravel? No change?
I, I, I wouldn't change that right now.
Street sweeping?
I propose raising it up a little bit because we didn't, you don't get everything for that fifteen hundred dollars. We could go a little bit further, less by the hour. We're paying for that.
Okay, so just proposing to, to five hundred dollar increase?
Yeah, at least get a little bit more that, you know, up into the carous and all them and areas that we haven't, you know, get the sweep, sweep that good.
Alright, coal patch hot mix? If anyone wants to stop, if you have questions, just.
No, uh, I increased a little bit, but this year we use most of it out with the road maintenance, and, and that's where I'm concerned. We can either take and put that in the road maintenance now that that's a line. And not have to increase that, but, you know, and that's just a thought. Because it is part of road maintenance, coal patching and, you know, we get different lines for this and that and.
It makes sense, just for me to put it together, so. Alright, uh, salt, no increase there?
No, and actually, we've, uh, still got eleven thousand dollars worth of salt money, and we're gonna fill it in as soon as we get cleaned out here.
Okay, well, but salt went up, so.
Right, but we're still gonna be, we're still gonna be able to finish the year with what we have and then have some money to.
Okay, so you don't wanna increase that line?
I don't think it's, I mean, we knocked out, we got through the winter last year, we then.
Okay, I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm just, I just want.
I think we're good.
So stormwater management, that's no change there?
I didn't change it because I, uh, I don't know what that line actually is. You, that is the outside contracts or something.
Yes, to, to, um, to map and all that, so we need to check and see.
Yeah, I didn't change nothing on that.
We need to continue doing that with the S four.
I'm waiting for a call on the catch basins to get them in here to clean them.
Okay.
Showman used to do it, they sold their truck, they're not doing it anymore, so I'm waiting on another, I think it was a callback, they, they've done it previously.
Okay, hopefully they're.
Hot, and then see if we can get it scheduled.
Close by, you know, closest showman.
That's one of the things that we have to monitor, what comes out, right, from the water. We need to make sure we know what's happening.
Yeah, if we know exactly what we're taking out and where we're cleaning and everything else, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I, I used to do it in.
Okay.
Perfect, yeah. Alright, so.
I didn't, I increased the road resurfacing line by twenty-five thousand, not knowing what your plans are. Now, I have a suggestion. We finish the heritage project.
No.
Without, I mean, get gravelled in, based in.
Yeah.
I suggest that we do something with Sligo from the Bear Road at least to Woodlands.
Yeah, okay, that, yeah, that's pretty rough.
And get that ground down and based in this year, and then next year, plan on paving all three of them projects at once, just the overlay. I think that would probably, I, I wanna get, I'll get a price out of it different ways, but it, it, it won't hurt to let it settle an extra year.
You just confused me. Did you say this year?
This coming, not now, this next nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen, okay, this year's till eighteen.
Right, we haven't sat down and talked about roads, but.
Yeah.
But I know Sligo Road is getting in pretty rough shape and.
Yes.
I wanna get permission to get them to look, get a price on doing that section and finishing heritage the way we did the Woodlands.
Now, the Woodlands is done completely?
No, it's not overlaid. It's got one top coat.
So we need to overlay that and we need to.
But we need, we can, if we can hold off and do all three overlays in one year.
Oh, that's probably better, yeah.
Not just coming yet. Next year, we'll, I mean, we finish heritage, base it in, just like we did Woodlands.
Mm-hmm.
And it's set to another year.
Yeah.
And then do Sligo, base it in, and let that set for a year.
Yeah.
And then all three, try to get all three of them top coated the following year.
That makes sense.
At least we give us a jumpstart on the Sligo Road situation. That road is gonna be falling apart.
It's coming apart, yeah, it's pretty rough.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And I, and there is other parts of it that have to be done, but, you know, I mean, we, we have to look at that later on and.
We don't, we don't have a scientific approach as to which end of it is more heavily traffic traveled.
I'm thinking.
I don't know, but the record is in rougher shape, so.
To, uh, Woodlands, it's probably.
Just because of going to.
More money in the paving budget, I'm thinking of dropping some part top down there ourselves and spreading it with the backhoe and then rolling it in and buying us some time on that rough sections down towards, uh, Mrs. Aitman's house, down in that area. That stretch of road there is getting, got some pretty bad spots.
Pretty rough there, too, okay.
But that'll buy us some time. We put initial hot top on that ourselves. It's, you know, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be the smoothest road, but it's not gonna be nowhere near what it is.
Mm-hmm.
At least it keeps the hot top together for a while.
And then, um, okay, so that's, that covers highway department, but then under, um, government buildings, you've got the highway garage maintenance. You wanna increase, increase that up to seventy-five, however?
And that we may be able to drop exactly by, I wanna see what we're done with these other projects, you know, finishing up the stuff we're doing. I, that may not have to change. I, I know that was in there for moving the office and stuff and we got pretty much all that stuff pretty well taken care of, but we still have some money in that budget and like, so.
Are there any other questions for, for George, right? For right now? Alright, well, thank you for the, we are, um, we're meeting, we're gonna meet next Monday. So town, uh, town halls closed for, for, tell them if they're turning, we're all of it, but we're gonna meet and just do a budget workshop. So we're gonna take up your budget. You don't have to be here before, but, um, start plugging it in probably next Monday night, you and the police department, so, just so you're aware.
What time is that gonna be?
Six o'clock. I think, no, we said, I'm sorry, six, six to eight. Just so you know, so we, we may come back with more questions after Monday.
And that's fine, Ed.
Yes, so you know.
I would expect you.
Alright.
Right, as far as the issues, like, we, we get some line debt out, significant line, you know, some stuff going on, so.
So we just did a couple of things here. I'm, I'm sorry, any other questions for Uncle? We have a few more things on the agenda that'll go over. So we hired the transfer station attendant, did that. We've talked about the, the phone, we're gonna do an experiment, see if it works down there.
Yeah.
And we can go from there. The DOT student project doesn't really affect, well, it will. So, um, engineering students at the University of New Hampshire are, have proposed to use Portland Avenue, that, uh, the intersection of Portland, Roberts, and Bear, thank you, Bear Road, um, as one of their capstone projects. So coming up with this traffic calming techniques, that sort of thing, that they can then give to us that we could use, um, as sort of a launching point or a starting point to go to the state and say, this is what we like to see done, um, which will benefit us, that we don't have to hire an engineer to come up with the plans and then, they get some practical experience. As long as we decide we're gonna go forward with it, I can't, everyone, we wouldn't because it costs us anything, they will be reaching out to you, to the police department and to the select board to get our input, just so you're aware, so. But, um, we haven't decided whether or not we're gonna go forward with it, and we'll talk about it a little later, so. I don't wanna keep you all here for, for nothing, so.
Nope.
But there is one other thing I forgot to put on the agenda. Um, speaking of Heritage Drive, up way past me, on eighty-six?
Yes, I, I talked to Mr. Shavitt the other day.
We did, I ran into him and I said I would talk to you about it.
Think I'm gonna take the hot top and just try to, that's where they ended that patch.
Yeah, they just dropped by.
And you can feel it in the air. I didn't realize that's where she fell.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I thought it was, I thought it was down in the area that was.
So imagine you're walking along or driving along, you're probably about, no exaggeration, the thickness of this table, pavement just drops.
They didn't match it in. They just stopped paving.
So whenever it got, I don't know how many years ago it was, they, that is what it is. That's how it was done apparently.
And they didn't blend, they didn't blend it in.
Not at all. And I see, he's told me that before, and I've gone down, I don't, I, I've guessed. Not at all, and I see, he's told me that before, and I've gone down, I don't, I, I guess I've missed it, I don't know how many times, but I could, maybe I didn't go down far enough. Well, yeah, it's quite, it's significant drop off, so, yeah.
So that didn't get fixed when we were doing the project?
We didn't go down far down.
We didn't go down far. So it's just a matter, we can get hot top, we just, we can blend that in.
A little bit, so it's not as dramatic of a thing, all right.
Now, you can feel it when you, even when you plow.
I can feel it. Not a fault of plowing, but I think it's because the plow hits it on such an angle, the plow rides right up over it, it's not a shaft, it's, it's an angle.
Right.
But it's like they painted, instead of grinding in and blending it in, they just stopped.
And it's a good two inches at least, it was just dropped, so if you're walking the other direction, or stumble, it's a danger, but if you're going the other way, you hit your foot and then you fall on your face like, um.
So, yeah, I, he mentioned that to me Saturday, and I told him, we, you know, we can get a lot of top.
Perfect. Any objections from the board to fixing, never really fixing?
No, we have, the money looks an inexpensive price.
Okay. Anything else for us?
I don't, I don't think so.
All right.
I think that's enough.
Anything for, from the board?
Yeah.
All right, well.
One thing on the CIP here. Caroline was, is there, we do have stuff in that budget, CIP for us, right?
Yeah, I just haven't updated it on the system yet.
Okay, that's why she didn't see it, yeah.
And you're gonna make that report another night, so.
I am.
So.
No, no.
If you have things, if you have things on the CIP, we'll be coming forward to it.
To change it, that's what I'll find out.
I got some, uh, misfortune.
Yep.
All right.
If I don't have them, I'll.
Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Chief, uh, Bob, do you mind if the fire chief goes?
No, no, he was here before me, yes, fine.
He's, uh, he's been patiently waiting.
Yes, fine.
He came in just late enough where he got stuck behind the, uh, the budget briefing, sorry. You're, you're next, you're out next week, so, the week after, Ron, eighteenth.
Right.
I got that info from the department. Yeah, I mean, first of all, this is what we, one of the items, some of the other. Did you guys see that? Everybody got an old Lindigew Award, and we all got a, uh, material, victorious service ribbon. So they all have that.
You're gonna hang that at the fire station?
Yeah, yeah, and we're gonna do some of the other things that we perceived over the years.
Let me see.
Just a clear for the minute.
POs to run through, and I'll be out of your hair. First one I have is from the city of Dover, um, it's for repairs to engine one. Inspection service and repair is what it was, the, bits on lighting issues on board, which Dover took care of. Uh, this has come out of our vehicle repair line, there's still about four thousand dollars on there, so we're well above what we need to have. So it had the work done was four thirty-eight twenty-four.
You reached your, uh?
I'll move purchase order one four three nine, the amount of four thirty-eight twenty-four to the city of Dover, for work on engine one.
Engine one chief is the older of the two vehicles, correct?
Yes.
Third one's aware.
Yeah, all the vehicles have been inspected, serviced, haven't gotten a portion of the bill for that yet, but usually that's typical, only a few hundred dollars, so once we get that, basically that should take care of all of our equipment needs unless something goes completely in the next three months, and we should, we should be all set.
All right, any other questions on this one? All right, all those favorite purchase order fourteen thirty-nine, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Do you get yours back if I'm over?
No.
Okay. I'm the only one who gets it.
Caroline gives us.
Do we keep all the?
Yeah, I've got a little holder here, I'll put it on, and then I can hand it off.
Okay.
Up here at the end, or we can just set it in here. And the second, one that I have is actually a proposal, I gotta run it by you to make sure it's all on work, is, we got three projects that we wanna do for building maintenance.
Yeah.
Side of things.
Yeah.
And this is the first one, and the individual that we're looking to do the work has written up a proposal, and we use his proposal. Basically, what we're gonna have done is the side door, which faces the ball field.
Yeah.
Is deteriorated to the point where it's starting to fall out of its.
Well, that's probably not good.
So, the bottom of it is just rusted away.
Sure.
So we're looking to get that replaced.
Yeah.
He's also gonna repair some of the pavement, put a bit of sweep on it, because it's just a.
Sure.
Cold age comes in there like the door tomorrow, that's one of the broadheads. It's a piece of front fascia above with a tank truck stitch again on the ball field side, that was separated in some of the winter storms last year, about a ten-foot piece that decided it wanted to exit, so that's gonna get repaired.
Okay.
We had some donations to us for some microwaves and some cabinetry for the kitchen.
Yeah.
So, um, we had some electrical work upgrades done last year that CMO did.
Yeah.
This is kind of a add-on to that, where we wanna get some cabinetry and countertop put in in the kitchen to finish that project off.
Yeah.
That's all incorporated within that proposal by Rick Burns to do the three projects.
Yeah.
It, it has the total there of twenty-five thirty-five.
Yeah.
For, and then, uh, I know who he is, and he's, he's come highly recommended, he's done work for some other people in the department. Um, the thing is, if you look on there, it says payment as follows, instead of just one check issue, as typical as a contractor may want, the left front, the little middle, the in.
Yeah.
Is that something that works here or not?
Um, I can't see why not, as long as we have, uh, we'll just have to have a purchase order for each one for all three installments, you know.
Is that how you want it? As I wrote a purchase order for the total, I didn't write it as three different things.
Put it right on the purchase order.
Right, well, that's what I mean, we'd have to, I'm sorry, we don't need three separate ones, that's what I meant, I'm sorry, we.
Yeah, we have the one purchase order, if we wanna put in three different dispersals.
Put your, put your terms on there, and then, um.
Terms are here, can I just put it together with that? Because basically, that proposal right there requires a signature, I guess that's what the guy wants to do, so if you wanna sign this, I'll take this one back with me.
So as soon as we approve the purchase order, I can sign?
Purchase order number fourteen thirty-seven. This is gonna come out of the building and maintenance budget for the fire department, there's roughly sixty-nine hundred dollars still in there, out of the third, out of the seventy-five which we have, so. You looking up the number?
I am.
Seventy-five hundred, it's, uh, four one nine four four three two, you know, it's under the heat, electricity, and all that.
I know, I just looked at it the other night, the other day, when I was working on Caroline, and you did have a lot of money in there.
Were you?
Should be on the first page under, or second page under government buildings?
Yeah, it's right up in this one.
Oh, you have it under government buildings, instead of.
Yeah, no, it doesn't come on in the fire department, no, it does not, you wanna see a line for the town hall and all those things? It's right here. It's right here, it comes under all of those.
Top page four.
Yeah.
Main, is it?
Building main is right there.
Fire department, seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, seventy-five hundred, we spent like six hundred to this point. So.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
So we're still plugging in there, and I'll, see, that's two projects, when I get those all done, getting settled.
Okay, so who has the PO?
I got the PO.
Why don't we move it, so we can discuss it more? You're up next, I think.
Purchase order one four three seven, Rick Burns Cabinry.
Are or not, remove or replace?
Oh, remove and replace, lock the side entry door, replace front.
Fascia.
Fascia and cabinets and countertops in kitchen, to be under repair and maintenance at the fire department for twenty-five thirty-five. Payment terms as well, I'm gonna add on there.
Okay, yeah, and, and Mike's looking at him right there.
I'll, I'll say, okay.
So everyone's clear, the, the contractor would like to be paid in three installments of eight hundred and forty-five dollars. So they can buy the materials, I'm gonna sort them.
Exactly, buy the materials and get going with it, once, once he starts the project, and then.
So what is gonna be the?
Eight forty-five.
At signing?
Yeah.
This includes all of it, sure.
Yes, this is the whole thing right there, for all the parts and pieces that we need.
So at the door.
At signing, so they need five parts, and then when he starts, he wants another eight forty-five. And then eight forty-five at completion.
So, 'cause we get this signed, and Caroline can get the first one going, so he can start doing what he needs to do, so we can get this done for winter sets in. If the door replaces my means.
Any other questions or concerns or comments?
No.
We had a microwave, we had a set of kitchen cabinets donated to us, though we need the countertops and the insulation and whatnot, so that's what he's gonna do. So some of the stuff that should work in installments, a donation, so we're utilizing that.
I was gonna say, 'cause I'm looking at this list of things, that's quite a bit here, so.
There is.
For the twenty-five hundred dollars, so that's.
Yeah, I was, I thought it was gonna work out.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns, seeing now, all those favorite purchase order fourteen thirty-seven, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Can't you sign that one, too? One will leave here, so Caroline's aware, and that one I'll bring back with me, so we can give it to the contractor, so he can do his thing. Miss Caroline's pile that.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Congratulations again on, uh.
Yeah, it was a good evening, it was a, I loved it, some of the members that were new and had never been through anything like that, because, I said, you know, the governor and Ian Custer and he was.
Still have pictures in one of the papers, yeah?
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of post pictures on the town, on the fire department website, so those are kind of nice to do.
The governor had something on the Facebook page, too, where it was, none of you, it was a kid, I think, and.
Yeah, that was the first thing, there was Laconia had done something, to make a wish thing for a young child, so that was a good picture.
I have a question for you, um, I know it didn't work out last year, and I'm not sure of the details of why it didn't work out, but I'm looking to see if the fire department has person who can do minor first aid and CPR for rec.
Do, yeah, I'll get you that.
What is your cost?
We'll find out.
In our budget.
No, I actually think I have some guys that might be able to do it, if they, if not, we'll go to the ambulance, and I know that they can do it, and they should.
Do you know if it's a cost for you?
It shouldn't be a cost, I mean, we're paying them a contract anyway, but I'll find out.
Okay, all right.
I'll find out.
All right.
I know we've always wanted Sean Blinn to do it, but he's been kinda like.
He's on strength, yeah.
Disappeared, so, but I have some other guys that are going through train, training classes and whatnot for that, and I'll find out where they are. Tanner Hoffman, but he hasn't been around, but his wife said, he even had some suggestions at home, so, he was one that was willing to do it, he had approached me on that.
Okay.
And if he is, what's your timeframe?
Well, it won't, it'll be next spring.
Next year, oh.
Next spring, but I, I have to budget for it, it was a cost, so, and, um, last year they had to go through McGregor, uh, McGregor?
The day of McGregor? That's their room.
And I don't really want to do that.
I'm sure we could get something through our own provider.
Me, too, I wasn't part of it last year, so.
Yeah, okay, but even if we couldn't do that, I know I have a bunch of guys in the department that work for American, I'm sure we could hook up with American and do something, so.
All right.
Let me research that, and I'll get right back to you whether or not you need to budget a cost for that.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
And have, have we got the number back from, uh, York on the contract?
Have we contacted you?
They may have talked to Caroline, but I don't.
Last I knew that.
Nothing that I know, the last time I was in here, two Mondays ago.
Yeah, and Caroline and I were.
I ran right over there, talked to, talked to Brian Moffett about it, he said he was gonna get on them, and then had Caroline's contact number, so if there's anything.
Okay.
She would have it long before me.
Okay.
I just wanted to expedite that, that's why I came back last week.
All right. Anything else, throw that to the fire chief? And we already talked to you about the, the railroad crossing.
Railroad crossing, I got that information, next week, you gotta do your own little budget thing, and I'll be back on the eighteenth, they go, remind.
Yeah, perfect.
My presentation, I kinda gave you a synopsis of it.
Awesome.
All right.
So do you have a plan of what you're gonna do, because of the railroad crossing?
A plan?
Yeah.
I respond when they call for something, that's what my plan is.
Are you going to the bridge?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Oh, well, that's good news.
Yes, when we purchase our trucks, that's one of the things you make sure you do when you purchase a truck, that will fit under any of the, we can't worry about weight limits, because in some places we can go, so you come on the other side, we understand the numbers, but all of our vehicles fit under any of those.
Awesome, okay.
Could you go on that?
Perfect.
Okay.
Very good. All right, well, thank you very much, have a great night.
Thank you.
Next, chief.
How we doing today?
Great, how are you doing?
So far, so good.
The night is young, though, isn't it?
It is. Okay. Two purchase orders, we need to purchase three batteries for AED units. So, number one four six five to Quality Response Systems, three AED replacement batteries for four hundred ninety-seven dollars.
So I will move purchase order one four six five, the amount of four hundred ninety-seven dollars for AED replacement batteries.
Second?
Are these the ones that are in the cruisers, chief, or is it just stationary with the cruisers?
All right, any other questions? All those favorite purchase order fourteen sixty-five, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I will pass it over to you, so you can see it.
We have an AIN cruiser camera that's in dire need of a repair to its hard drive, so I have purchase order number one four six four, made up to watch guard video for one repair to DVR, this is on a cruiser number seventy-four, for three hundred and nineteen dollars, and that will come out of our ready repair plan.
I move purchase order one four six four, for watch guard video for repair to DVR on cruiser number seventy-four for three hundred and nineteen dollars.
Second up, any questions? Those are favorite purchase order fourteen sixty-four, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
That's all that I have for you.
Okay.
Did you wanna discuss the full budget tonight?
Please. So, we'll have to go line by line, I guess, um, so for salaries, so for so just the first two lines, so.
Correct.
For the chief's line and the two full-time lines, is this going to be based on the, um, three percent merit?
This is based upon merit up to three percent.
Up to three percent.
Up to three percent.
Okay. All right.
And we have a twenty thousand dollar decrease in contract services.
Mm-hmm.
Just based upon, you know, what happened this year, we don't anticipate doing as many, uh, details next year as we did, uh. It's actually, it's actually more of a, a true number than it was adding at the sixteen last year.
Okay.
Uh, payroll taxes and retirement, uh, those numbers are reflected upon three percent, um, it could be less, depending on how, how, uh, the pay raise is going.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
In the event that you don't give an employee a three percent, where does that money go?
Stays in the general fund, go back to them. Unless it's needed someplace else by another department or somebody else.
Okay, okay.
Everything else stays status quo until we get down to equipment.
Mm-hmm.
We are anticipating receiving a grant from Homeland Security, Highway Safety, for two new AIN cruiser camera, um, video systems in twenty nineteen, and those are five thousand dollars each, so I've added thirteen hundred to help, help offset the initial five thousand that we'll have to pay on our end of our budget, and the rest will come out of the equipment line item.
So you said it was two of them?
Two.
Correct. Did you say five, or five hundred, or five thousand?
Five thousand.
Okay.
Fuel, I increased by one thousand, and that's just the, uh, the cost of adding, purchasing additional car wash. Uh, this is when I'm allowed to wash cars here, um, our current coupons will run out within, uh, within about two weeks.
Okay.
So the plan is to purchase two this year, and then two on the twenty nineteen budget.
And where do you get your car washes?
The car wash across from, um, Dunkin' Donuts, whitewater car wash, car wash.
Dunkin' Donuts, where?
Dover.
Dover.
Dover, drive through car wash.
Is it the one by On Suchl Avenue?
Yes.
Isn't that Black Dog?
I don't think it is anymore, they changed. I was gonna think when you said car wash.
Oh, you're talking about Crosser Friendlies.
No, no, Dunkin' Donuts, downtown Dover.
Well, there's multiples in Dover. There's like four of them.
Downtown.
Oh, you're talking about the one that...
Right, the railroad tracks.
Right at the track, gotcha, yeah, okay.
Takes care of the fuel ammo. Increase of five hundred dollars, that is roughly three cases of ammo. Now that we have a person that's on the SWAT team, you know, he goes out and trains twice every month, so that basically takes care of his ammo, not just for the SWAT team.
So that's just training ammunition?
That's just training.
Does the town provide ammunition in case he has to go on a SWAT call or is it SWAT team?
Well, we have a stockpile downstairs, so if there was a SWAT call or whatever, and suddenly they call for thousand rounds, he can grab it, yeah, a case or two or whatever. Stratford Dispatch, I went high with this number, I anticipate it's actually gonna be significantly less than this, but in the past, they've been giving all of the towns in Stratford County, once they figure out the bill, there's a five percent discount. And for several years, now the chiefs are complaining to the county that they're not putting enough money into the, into the fund to maintain the current radio system that we have, and right now it's faltering. And I know that the chiefs are actually meeting with the commission is, I think, next week or within a couple of weeks, to talk to the county about doing a countywide evaluation for the radio system. And the chiefs had recommended to the sheriff's department and the county that eliminate the five percent discount and put that money into the radio repair system for the future.
Maintain the system, yeah.
So, within a couple of weeks, I'll be able to give you a better number for that. What I do is I just rounded it off to make it a nice even ten thousand dollars, but it will be, it will be less than that.
So it's only those that, so Dover has their own dispatching system still, right?
Well, actually, Dover has their own, U one H has their own, Rochester and Somersworth has their own. What they're going to do is they're gonna contact those four communities and see about fixing the network the entire countywide.
Sure.
Of course, they'll have to pay their portion as well, the cities and whatnot, but from what I understand, Durham has already set aside a significant amount of money to do a survey for them, but they're on the county system, so we also wait a minute, I mean, let's just all do it once. Instead of trying to piecemeal together, hire somebody to come in, look at the entire county as a whole, and then come up with a plan.
Never understood why those communities decided they need to have their own dispatch.
Never made sense to me. So, as is proposed right now, a decrease of six thousand and six dollars and fifteen cents. Animal control, I just did three percent in her salary for an increase of nine hundred and two dollars in her salary, eight dollars in payroll taxes, for an increase in animal control budget of a hundred and one dollars. Having said that, we have shelter fees of five hundred dollars, that is the annual fee that we pay to canine chaos. I'm inclined to, for twenty nineteen, to go back to Pacheco Valley, and they do not, at this point anyway, they do not require a yearly stipend just to participate. They will, you'll have to pay, we have to pay them, you know, per dog, per day.
Right.
And we have so few dogs that we never really mount the five hundred dollars worth of service fees.
But didn't we just pay a...
Yeah, we just paid the four hundred and somewhat dollars to canine chaos per dog that was boarded there.
On top of the...
On top of the five hundred dollars, correct. So, they might be able to have a savings there. We're actually, the dog officer was actually speaking with the folks at Pacheco Valley, trying to round off the numbers and whatnot, but I think we're going to eliminate the yearly assessment.
What was the reason why you changed?
For a while there, you know, Pacheco Valley was under different management and they wanted, at one point, twelve hundred dollars a year just for the basic fee. And a lot, that's when a lot of, a lot of the agencies and the counties said, no more, and we started going to canine chaos. They had no management now, new financial structure, so...
Now, they're building a new place too, right? Is that in process?
They're in a much more stable position than they have just yet.
Isn't that right, by the courthouse, right?
Yes, right by the courthouse, yeah. Under emergency management, I'm recommending that we leave Homeland Security, if we're going to exactly the same. And under the CIP, we're recommending twenty-four thousand dollars for radar and message board. Half of that will be funded, hopefully, we'll know in a couple of weeks, from Homeland Security Highway Safety. So what else you have there, four, about twelve thousand dollars?
All right.
As far as the cruiser concerned, I know twenty nineteen is not the year that we purchase a cruiser, but at this time next year, we will have two car, one car with twenty thousand miles, another car with almost twenty thousand miles. So I am suggesting that in order to not have to significantly increase the vehicle maintenance account, that we lease the vehicle in twenty nineteen for three years, and overall we're looking at about twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars over and above the cost of just purchasing it outright and equipping it. That will still allow us to stay within the twenty-five thousand dollars that we're putting aside every year for a cruiser, but we're getting the cruiser a little bit sooner, we're getting the mileage down, and we won't have to significantly increase vehicle maintenance account. And then, in a long-term planning, probably twenty twenty will suggest leasing the second vehicle, doing the same fitting, and again, we'll still be able to maintain and be within the CIPs of twenty-five thousand dollars. We'll have a newer vehicle, a lot less mileage, and I think overall, by the time we get to, if I figured it out correctly, by the time we get to twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-four, we actually might be able to skip a vehicle. So I think in the long run, by doing this, we're going to save some money in the long run, so...
That's it? Questions for the chief and the members? Pretty straightforward. Appreciate you coming in and talking about it, I don't think I don't... I understand it, so... But we appreciate you presenting it to us. Miles, you're good?
It's good.
All right. Do we have anything on the list there, do we, for you? Oh, yes, Oak Street.
Oak Street, yes.
Let's talk about Oak Street some more. So we have the temporary MOU with the city of Dover, we'd like to make it permanent. Caroline was going to forward it to you if you don't have it already. Have you taken a look at it, see if there's anything in there that you want to add it? A little detail, not details, but...
But I think we should add in there, you know, where and who is the one to take care of the police response or accidents.
Right, exactly.
And whatever on that, on that section of roadway.
We agree. And we leave that to you to figure out how you want it to work out, so...
I have, as of new time, I haven't received it.
Okay.
I haven't seen it. She goes something afterwards or...
She did, because I didn't talk to her until afternoon.
Okay, all right.
Maybe around one, I think, is when I talked to her, so... But I'll remind her tomorrow when I talk to her, make sure she sends it to you. Anything else for the chief?
All right, you're good, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Two things. I'd like to have someone make the motion to go into non-public session to deal with a legal issue under Building Inspector Code Enforcement.
Make motion against non-public for Building Inspector Code Enforcement.
Second, then. Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Would you roll call Denise? Miles?
Yes.
Mike, yes, we are a non-public session to deal with a legal issue. If you all wouldn't mind. We're all back on? Moving along, we're gonna move down to town administration, budgets. With first order, of course, Roman numeral I, one Roman, is twenty eighteen revised budget. I know you're still working on it with Caroline, you've made...
Yeah, I'll talk to her tomorrow and see if we can get another one, maybe Friday morning. But we were like ninety percent done and we both had to go, so...
And Roman two, third quarter financial, I saw the email that you were gonna work, work on that for budget for the twenty-fourth.
Yes, yeah, we were doing both of those two.
Okay, Caroline was gonna work with...
Yep, yep.
All right. Roman three, budget planning, administrative support. Okay, so we should discuss, and we've had some time to think about it, the ad hoc town manager committee report and what we think our next steps should be under this. What are folks' thoughts on how they would like to proceed, if they would like to proceed at all?
Well, I think we need to take a stand whether or not which one, that we would take forward and suggesting, it's still the town's choice, I think we have to have a public hearing or something, right? Or, well, maybe we don't, what do we have to do?
We would propose the position within the budget. I would suggest it would make sense to, once we come up with a proposal, a public hearing so people can weigh in, but it would be part of the normal budget process, depending on what we do.
Then you really wouldn't have to have another public hearing, you would do that within the budget process.
Yeah, yeah, you could. I just think it's such a huge change that it might make sense just to have a public hearing on that so people can let us know.
Well, it's only a huge change if you go one direction.
That's true. Well, I mean, you're adding, well, that's true, you're right about that. So that leads me to the second part of the conversation, is, are folks feeling like they wanna go in the town admin route, or do they wanna go town manager route, or do they not wanna do it at all?
I don't think we have the choice, we have to do something, because clearly, things aren't gonna get done if we don't have a full-time staff person to help.
I agree that there's a need. At this point, it's unclear to me if the need is additional, like another full-time person, or can we get some part-time help? Like, it's just not clear to me, everything that's not getting done, and what the actual, is it a forty-hour a week position? Or can't be done with getting Caroline some help?
You know Caroline wasn't full-time, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so now she is full-time?
Yep.
On a temporary basis?
Oh, I didn't know.
Well, is it a temporary, I think it's a temporary basis until we decide what's gonna happen, right?
She was at full-time anyways because she lived thirty-two hours.
Okay.
So we increased her hours to forty because she's an hourly employee.
I see, okay.
So I think, if my understanding is that if we went to town administrator, it would be, that would be the full-time person, and then it would still require a half-time person. So it's, I'm not saying it's Caroline's job, but it would be, her position would be the full-time position, right? And then they would have a half-time position for the other stuff, right?
In my mind, it would, this is what I would suggest, that it would really go the town administrator route. That would be a full-time position, and then you would have a part-time bookkeeper.
Right.
I don't know if that's twenty hours a week or what, what the reasonable hours, it may be less, I don't know, but it's probably twenty, I would think, but the town administrator, so what, we did receive some job descriptions of what other towns, it was like ten or fifteen other towns, I'm not sure what towns do. So it would be up to the select board to determine what that person's responsibilities are, how much of the scope we would like to see that person covered and handled. And then based on that, you would say, well, okay, so you still need a bookkeeper to handle payroll. You wanna have redundancies, so the town administrator would probably need to know how to handle payroll in that other person's absence, which is what we're lacking in that. You would give, depending on how much latitude you wanna give the town administrator, they would give him or her certain responsibility, I don't have it in front of me, so I apologize.
Well, one of them, I tried to read the ones that were closest to us in the area, but one of them, I mean, they had hiring and firing responsibilities, they, you know, they were the supervisory person over the part-time people. But it was still, with the town administrator, it was still the select board that had control, where if you go to the town manager, the select board moves us off and takes.
So the select board still does the hiring and the firing technically, the manager know those positions, the vetting is done by the town administrator and the managing of them is by the town administrator, but the select board, I think, still has to hire them?
Well, the one I read, it...
They did the hiring?
Yeah.
I thought that was done, they're only under town manager, I don't know.
No, because they got, they got that permission from the select board.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
They can be whatever you want them to be.
It depends, all right, misunderstanding.
You would be giving them the authorities.
Okay, so just say for, okay, so this is just, this is just the town of Auburn, because number one in the, in the alphabetical order comes first in this list that I have. Job summary. Chief Administrative Officer for the town coordinates and is responsible for the administration and financial management of the town, supervises town hall operations, oversees the general operations of the other town departments, and manages all town activities on a day-to-day basis, reports to the Board of Selectmen, major duties, carries out the directives and policies of the select board, supervises all personnel and activities under the jurisdiction of the select or Board of Selectmen, they call it, maintains the town personnel policy, assists with interviewing, selection, supervision and discipline of town employees and department heads, coordinates with selectmen, written performance evaluation, department heads and administrative staff employees, develops staff evaluations, reviews personnel actions, determine that they are in accordance to town policy and all laws, regulations, regulations and procedures. I mean, I don't have to read everything, that's normal stuff. Receives and investigates response to citizens' inquiries and complaints addressed to the Board, where other town officials meets or converses on the telephone with the members of the general public, employees or others, as needed, coordinates with appropriate departments, ports or committees resolve issues successfully or report to the select board for direction. Oversees the preparation of all budgets comprising the annual town budget with the budget and finance coordinator, reviews all budget requests and assists with presentations to the select board, budget committee coordinates recommendations by those boards. Works with the budget and finance coordinator, isn't someone we would have, but, and the town treasurer, to develop projections of all revenues, expenditures and available funds to the prior developing, the proposed annual budget and or summary budget, message for the voter's guide, prepares documents for bidding or town projects or large purchases, negotiates and administers contracts as necessary, oversees general purchasing activities. I mean, so, and there's like three more pages.
Yep.
So I don't wanna, you don't need to read them all, right?
No, no.
But, I mean, so you understand, this is what...
The day-to-day activities and tasks that needs is required.
Some of which Caroline's position handles now, some of which is handled directly by the select board currently. The way the state is, well, I have, begin to listen, but the way that the state, federal government is moving, the days of having just three folks that can come and go, some just because they have the leisure during the day of coming in, is not gonna cut it. You need to have, you need to have people that are a little more sophisticated in dealing with intergovernmental agencies, dealing with complex reporting requirements, you have to have a trained staff that's capable of doing that. Relying on three elected officials to handle that doesn't make sense anymore, that's why we're one of the few towns left that do not have a town administrator or town manager. So, one of the next steps, in my mind, is putting out something to the townspeople, whether it's, and it's just, it's titled Town Manager, town administrator, the select board evaluates options, and I think it was emailed to all of you. I made some edits today.
Trying to too.
So you can take a look at those, we don't have to act on this tonight, I'd like you to actually take some time to read it, some of the changes I made, we can deal with it on the eighteenth, whether or not we wanna send it out to people. Or...
I don't see your changes on here, are they?
They're in there, they're just, I don't know why they're not highlighted. Some of the major changes, I changed under the bullet, the title, why are we short-staffed all of a sudden, I changed that. Section under how many employees does Rawmester have? I think those were the only two sections that I actually changed. I don't think there's anything on that. Oh, and what is the ultimate goal, question mark, I changed some things on that. I changed some things on that.
Okay.
Full sentences in there are completely new, so take a look at it, take some time to digest it. So. It seems to me that, Miles, you still have some outstanding questions that you want to have answered before you want to move forward. And that's completely fine. We have time, we're just dealing with department budgets right now anyway, so we have time to think about this some more and try to get some of your questions answered. Denise, from what you're saying, it sounds like you think moving towards more administrator is the way to go, and I tend to agree with you.
I agree with that as well. As an initial step, you know, maybe we decide administrator isn't far enough in a couple of years, whatever, towards something else. But I think it's a baby step.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's certainly nothing to stop residents of the town to petition for the warrant if they want. If they decide they don't think this is enough and they want to the town government to change in the direction of a manager.
They won't when they see the price tag on that, just to be honest with you.
It is much more expensive, for sure. I mean, I just, it's, you know, it's a misnomer to say that, you know, oh, just because you've got three people that have job, full-time jobs, that they can't serve on the select board, they're not willing to do the work. Right, I heard that last week, it was a little insulting, at least.
I don't think that's what we're saying, though.
No, no, that's what some people were saying to us. And I think it's a little insulting, not that you can step up and do it themselves, if they think that's the case, I'd be happy to give it to them. But, they never do, so. Times have changed. We do not live in that quote-unquote nicer, simpler, gentler time. We live in this in the real world. In the real world, there are new requirements that every town is required to do. I mean, again, sit through and look at that MS four.
Yep.
If you don't believe me, that's just the tip of the iceberg, the things that we have to work on. So if we think we want to keep fudging it and not, and doing like it was done at one time, just not doing things, we can do that. I had lunch, I breakfasted one morning with one of my former employees now. Her mom and dad both work for DES. And her dad was in the water division and her mom was in the air division. It's broken up that way. And I was asking what he did, and he was talking about reports that had to be filed. And I said, oh, you know, it's funny, he said, we just found out that, it was under the old MS four permit, not the new system, that, oh, we never even knew that we had to file this. And the same report just seemed to have been filed every single year with no changes. And we don't even know if the work was really done or not. And he goes, oh, you're from Rollinsford.
On the radar.
I'm like, yeah, he didn't know that. And he said, yeah, I know exactly who was signing them. And we knew, we didn't have the staff to follow up to say, but we knew they were being fudged and that the work really wasn't getting done. So there, we don't have that luxury anymore because it's a new permit, and I don't feel like getting fined. So we start being realistic in the way we staff the administrative support in this town. So, why don't we table this for now until we can, when we come back on the eighteenth, maybe we could be ready to make a more formal decision while working through the budget. Town hall maintenance, the portico, it does not appear to be able to be done this year. It's not going to work within the budget because of the air conditioning. So I would suggest we take it off as a standing item and put it under a request for next year's budget. And hopefully we can get it done. It's a shame that's not really get done, but I didn't realize that we hadn't been maintaining the generator and that there was some real deficiencies with the air conditioning units. So we will have to put that on hold, unfortunately. I've kept the request of the water and sewer district down here as a placeholder. That'll work through the budget, I think that's important. And the timeline, I keep trying to think, I need Denise, I'm sorry. But coordinating with the budget committee to make sure that the timeline matches.
Okay.
Okay, just make, you were going to reach out to John, right? To make sure that he had more than just, what was it, November? If not November, you might need to push that up a little bit. Okay, select board appointments to departments?
What's that?
I don't know, I didn't ask for it to be on, I don't know. Did you ask for it to be put on the agenda?
No.
You didn't ask for it to be put on the agenda? I didn't ask for it to be put on the agenda, so? We don't have any. Well, Caroline had mentioned that you had thought that having a liaison to each.
Oh, is that what, that's what that is? Well, that didn't make the whole.
Is this, I mean, I'm wondering if that's what this is.
Oh, I bet you that is, okay.
So it shouldn't say appointment, it should say liaison, right?
If that's what this is, and, yeah, I wasn't, sorry, I wasn't thinking about that. One of the things I think it might be helpful is if, there's three of us and three full-time departments, that a select board member is appointed to each, to a department. So they have one point of contact and that maybe we can bring those things, some things, or to the group. And just have, you know, just kind of keep in touch and make sure if things going okay. And, you know, I just think it would be good with the departments to know that we're here for them. And, you know, so, I was saying, have a police and fire is the ones I was thinking of needed to have. Like, one of us appointed to each one of them. I know they did this.
Just because at one time, they used to be department head meetings?
Well, that's another thing, is, you know, and having department head meetings for the board of selectmen as well versus, you know, to talk about things. It also helps to have communication with the department heads, with the selectmen, to hear other things that they might be thinking about all along and not talking to, police might know something and not talking to fire. It's an opportunity to have them. And I'm not saying we have to have them often, but maybe quarterly. But I think also just having that liaison, a single point of contact to talk to somebody, not making decisions, not voting, not giving permissions, that isn't part of, you know, that still has to go to the entire board. I just think, I know that they did it, oh, God, it's probably not ten plus years ago, they used to have that. And, you know, just popping in and seeing if everything's going okay and, I don't know. What do you think?
I don't think that's a bad idea. I, so like you said, we need to be careful not to make promises or something.
No, you can't make promises, no.
But, you know.
You're just a hearing.
We're just there to hear.
Yeah, yeah.
Communicate.
Yeah. And then you can bring something forward if they can't come some particular night and I say, can you bring this up for me and this is why, then we can do it. But I'm not saying vote or give them my permission on something. It still has to go through the board of selectmen. I just think that if you assign a person to a department and they can be your hearing, doesn't mean they can't talk to you or you or, you know, whoever. I just think it kind of just puts connections with the select board versus the departments.
You're okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
How do you feel about that?
I don't have a problem with it. I don't, as long as everyone recognizes that we don't make decisions outside of meetings.
Absolutely.
That we're, we only can act as a board, not as individuals, as long as we're all clear about that. Fine, but I mean, I still think we should probably bring back department head meetings, so.
I agree as well, yeah.
So I will talk with the department head and see what the best time of day is to meet with them and I will meet with them and we can bring back some.
So those meetings take place outside of?
Usually they, they used to have them once a month, I believe, so. At least quarterly, I think it was once a month, so. And in the morning typically, but, so. And we'll reach out to them, see if they still see value in bringing that back or not. Maybe they'd like this other arrangement instead or both of them. So I'll ask them what they think. But I certainly don't have a problem with that. I think that fostering lines of communications between the departments and the select board is a smart thing to do. It's important. Okay, so let me, let me reach out to the department heads and see what they think. If they think it would be beneficial to do what you've suggested, Denise? Or they think just having department head meetings again, or is it important to do both together? All right, we'll ask them and then we'll report back on our next regularly scheduled meeting. Letter C, junkyard public hearing date. So we've had a complaint relative to the junkyard, and we are going to have a public hearing to deal with that complaint and to discuss license renewal with the junkyard operator on November fifth. Yes, at six P M. So we'll notice that, we will make sure we notice, put out notice to the butters so they can be in attendance. Make sure to put this in the junkyard. Point. And if it goes over half an hour, we will just start the select board meeting as soon as the, as soon as the public hearing is over. Just make sure it's taken over, sorry. Didn't fall off the calendar, it is saved, all right. Newsletter, something.
Yes.
Do you have an update or questions or on the newsletter?
We're going to have to get it done in a few weeks.
Yes.
But I'm thinking, with all the changes that, I'd like to see part or good portion of it just be on the S V two changes for the town. And keep the calendar packed, but not have the other little tidbits in it.
And put out like the description of the process and important dates, that sort of thing?
Yeah, yeah.
What it'd be posting. Well, I mean, people are used to one system, so just to explain, this is.
Yeah.
This meeting will replace this meeting and people understand that it's important to go to this one versus, I'm sure enough. Okay.
Can we use this opportunity to communicate the town administrator as well? Or is that?
I'd like to do that.
So we've got, I have this thing that I've been working on, just talking about what the, what the differences are between, between the two. And it gives a synopsis of the hearing we had and what can be the next steps for the town if there should be next steps. So we certainly add that on there. I mean, I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is too lengthy to go on, I don't know.
It doesn't look it.
How many, well, plus you both need to read it again and make sure that all of this is needed and maybe it's not, I don't know, so. How many, how many pages is the?
The newsletter is.
It's double-sided, right?
Double-sided.
Legal side, right?
Legal side, but.
So you could do S V two on one and you could tell.
Two columns, yeah. Yeah, I think so. Two columns were.
Probably the two biggest things that are going to happen.
I know, it's such a critical time or a turning point or something that I think people need to.
Be aware.
Be informed and engaged.
Okay, one way or another. Okay, all right, so you're working on the.
Well, I have to get started, don't I?
Yeah. So, Miles, in the past, it's been sort of the keeper of the newsletter for us.
Okay.
So as long as you're okay with that, and she's still willing.
She's still.
Denise is still, okay, I'm still, okay, so we'd like you to work on it then. So I will, as soon as we work on and approve the final draft of this, we'll let you know so we can incorporate that.
Yeah.
I mean, feel free to send me edits or whatever separately. If you have them, then we can come back together and discuss them in a meeting, so. Okay, all right, anything else on the newsletter?
Yeah, maybe you'd like to share that with me as well?
As soon as it's ready, yeah, we will. Yeah, we will. Okay, anything else on the newsletter? Okay, budget committee alternate?
Yes, there isn't one assigned, so we have to assign an alternate.
Okay. I'm happy to do it if you want me to.
You can do it if you want to, I'm not going to say, yes, you have to do it.
I think you should.
Okay. I think a motion that we appoint Mike Rolo is a budget committee alternate.
Second opinion?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, all right.
I'll notify John later.
Perfect, thank you. Recreation, budget update.
Okay, I need to know when you want me to present the rec budget.
On, what's the date that Mark said?
Eighteenth?
No, it's the fifteenth. I mean, Mark is, Mark comes in on the eighteenth, he's coming in on Thursday, so I think he meant the fifteenth.
Okay, the fifteenth of this one?
Yeah.
Of November, oh, this one.
So it'll be fire and rec. And I don't think, I looked at cemetery. I don't think we need to ask, there's no real change. I don't think we need to ask Mark to come in unless you want him to.
No, there's no changes, yeah. So we have our rec budget done, so we'll go ahead and be ready.
That one's a pretty easy one, so.
Okay.
And I want to ask the town clerk to come into on the fifteenth to explain our proposed changes.
So when is recreation coming out?
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth of October, okay.
And just as a reminder, we have a budget workshop that's been noticed on the eighth, from six to eight, that's next Monday. And we have one on the thirteenth at nine A M. to noon, Saturday, and the twentieth, nine A M. to noon. If we'll be able to finish that day. Not, we'll take it up again on Monday, twenty-second, but we won't post that just yet, if we don't have to. All right, recreation snack refunds?
Still in process.
Okay, are they, are they actively working on it, do you know?
I believe they are. I will try to update them daily.
Okay, because we need to, the auditor needs to know how that's progressing. Or will want to know. G S R P C request for transportation planning projects. I wanted to keep this on as a placeholder. It works with, if we can go back up, if you don't mind, we'll skip back up to highway under department head business, the D O T student project. Did you all have a chance to look at that email sort of a quick schedule?
I did.
Okay. Are folks comfortable with having the students use this as a?
It's a great idea.
I mean, it doesn't cost us anything, it doesn't, it will cost, I don't know how much staff time to talk to George and Caroline and us, it doesn't cost staff time for us, but. So they may want to come to a select board meeting to discuss what our thoughts on the project, what we'd like to see happen in that intersection, if anything, and then they will go from there to design. With their proposal rather for us, as part of their capstone project for the engineering degree. All right, well, I will let Mr. Lambert at D O T know that we're good with that. All righty, board member activities. What do we have going on this week, Denise? Everything that you've already, you've already agreed to, besides everything you've agreed to already on the agenda? Any meetings?
I don't think I have any. Well, working with Caroline, it's either going to be Thursday, Friday morning or Friday afternoon to try to finish up the budget part of it, but I think that's all I have.
Planning board on tomorrow evening, where we will elect a new chair. That's it.
That's it? That's enough. And you're working on revised, working on agenda for revisions to the zoning?
Yes.
ordinances, yeah, start working on a public hearing and all that.
Yep.
Perfect. And what are you doing?
What am I doing? I'm going to reach out to department heads and coordinate, let's go back to the agenda. What am I going to do? I am going to come in tomorrow and debrief with Caroline. Tomorrow morning to explain all that happened at the meeting tonight. Things that are assigned to her, then things that are assigned to individual members. I am going to reach out to Tom Clark to talk about the junkyard public hearing and I'll reach out to the department heads to talk about rearranging or reorganizing department head meetings and your suggestion. I'm going to, let's go back, let's see what else I'm going to do tomorrow. That's just tomorrow. I'm going to work on looking at the budget again and see, um, look at highway and think about that. And transfer station, gonna reach out to Lampard Regional Plan, uh, Regional Cooperative to talk about garbage. And when the hearing is gonna be, or that date, meeting on that date's gonna be. Meeting date is going to be part of me. And I'm gonna look forward to your edits to this and work on another revised statement on, um, options for the town, and then over add them or not. That's what I'm gonna work on. And anything else that comes up during the week, but I get a call to come into town all four. Building permits.
Okay, what are we doing, just getting the, the number? And the amount, is that what we're doing?
And the address, so.
And the address, okay. Building permit number two oh one eight dash oh nine three, thirty-one Toll Road. For shingles on the garage roof. Sixty-five dollars.
Okay, it's been reviewed by Mr. Clark?
Yes, it has.
All right, so what I would suggest is for expiration date, this is all, this is you now, this is wonderful. So I would suggest that you write in, um, we usually give them a depends on the project, I would do six thirty nineteen.
Granted?
And, and, uh, yeah, yeah, and make sure you mark off whether we granted it or not. And then you just sign it, and then one of the lines there, Miles will sign it, and Miles will sign it, and then we go to the next one.
Okay.
Okay?
Next one is building permit two oh one eight dash oh ninety-two, two thirty-five Clement Road. Replace gutters, approved by Tom Clark, fee is fifty-five dollars.
This goes in Caroline's folder?
I just gave this first, I guess. Okay.
You granting it?
Yeah, it's been reviewed by Tom, I just wanted to
Okay, no, this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
As long as they've been reviewed and, and, and signed off on by, uh, Mr. Clark, then I would suggest that you do that, 'cause we're paying for it.
And six months on that one, too?
Yeah.
I don't know if we can talk about this in public.
Do you have the last of building permit, or?
No, that's the last of building permit.
Sorry, Mike?
No, don't worry. We're gonna go into non-public to discuss it, and we'll make a determination in public.
Okay.
So is there anything else in the folder?
That's it.
Miles, why don't you go through your folder, and then we'll do this.
So it's this guy?
This one.
Oh, yeah, it's yellow, that one.
Yeah. The much thicker one. So for those of you who did already tonight, I'll give it to them.
Uh, please fill out details, read number of chairs, other rooms, number of tables, contact person, signature for deliberative session.
Yeah.
So there's a building use form.
So that's cool, so we can hold the deliberative session.
Are we going there, or are we going?
Yeah, I think so, right?
Okay.
Now we're having it. Gymnasium, how many chairs? Activities will require chairs, specify the numbers. How many did we put out last time?
But we've never had an S V two.
Well, but for town meeting, why don't we put out, I don't know, probably a hundred and fifty chairs, I would assume.
We've got a lot of controversial stuff coming.
Two hundred chairs it is, do they have two hundred chairs there? Two hundred chairs it is. Area requested, gymnasium, district use only, all that, okay, let's see.
Was it six sixty-seven Main Street?
All right.
Next, we have a request for dispersment from Caroline Kendall, uh, for fifteen hundred dollars to Cornerstone V N A for the annual contribution, uh, which is budgeted. Do you need a motion, or?
So, time of year again, to disperse the, um, funds to charitable organizations that we do, we can, um, we don't have to do it tonight, we can either hold off on them, or we can disperse them if we feel. I know that we were, you were part of the conversation here, Miles, 'cause you weren't here yet, but we were pretty adamant that we didn't want to take. We, we, we had, we had promised these funds to these nonprofits to provide services to people in the house, so that we were, we wanted to pay them because they're depending on us.
And they do, they support our residents
Oh, yeah.
in many fashion, so.
So what I was gonna say, we could either hold off until the very last of the year, or we can do it tonight, or we can wait another couple of weeks, we can do whatever we want. But I think you and I were pretty
I'd look so far, but I didn't
steadfast in wanting to disperse the funds and then not use it for other things, so.
This is budgeted money.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So what do we have, Cornerstone V N A, so the visiting nurses, and who else has done?
Homemakers of Starford County, one thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Seeds of Faith, one thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Community Action Partnership, fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so we have the dispersment, is there any objection to dispersing the funds? We don't have to have a vote, 'cause we, we, we usually do it by, we can do a vote if you want, let's do a vote. We use your vote, you wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we disperse fifteen hundred dollars that's been budgeted for Cornerstone V N A annual contribution.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I don't know, that's the best way to request process, but let's just do it.
Yep.
You can do this one if you want.
I will move that we, uh, disperse one thousand dollars to Seeds of Faith for the annual contribution for the pantry.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Make a motion that we disperse one thousand dollars budgeted amount, Homemakers of Starford County. What does that say, annual?
Annual.
The contribution.
Thousand dollars. So, I, I just wanna make people aware that the homemakers is no longer, um, they've been absorbed by Easter Seals. Not, yeah, not that they're not worthy of a donation, I just
So they're not a standalone organization anymore?
Correct.
So the request we received then, from them earlier in the year, so when did this happen, Miles, do you know?
Early, late spring.
So right, this year then, so it would have been, the request would have come in then, from, all right, so.
Well, I'll revoke my, and, and let's look into it.
Okay, all right. I, um, I think the homemakers do great work, I served on their board for many, many years. I just think we should have all of that information.
Yeah.
Well, especially if we're gonna make a donation, or, or, to, to this organization that's still helping people on our founding, our community
Yep.
to send to their own person to, or write in to their ranks, so.
Let me put a note from Caroline, and you're saying it's Easter Seals?
Yeah. I have a note about Easter Seals, Easter Seals, okay. Oh, that's what we can do, that's what
So I will move that we disperse fifteen hundred dollars to Community Action Partnership for the annual donation.
I'm sorry?
Uh, fifteen hundred to cap? I was gonna wait till you were done, I'm not in any hurry, so. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Can you put that back in Caroline?
Yeah, make sure, put that one on top, so she sees that, yeah. Why, well, I'll make another one too. Homemakers, is that what it was? Hold on a second, is it?
Homemakers, yep. And it's not California, it's just, um, yes.
Homemakers.
They started talking, and it said something, and Google responded.
Easter Seals, all righty. What else we got?
Next, we have a letter from the Seacoast Shipyard Association thanking us for our generous contribution of one hundred dollars. Signed by Mr. John Joyle.
So did we already do it, or are they?
We did it a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
It's our annual dues of a hundred dollars, and I was gonna, thank you, Jay Jay, and put that on, on file.
I was just gonna file across it, so.
Write it basically?
Write on it?
Yeah.
Next, we have one purchase order, um, with many attachments. Purchase order fifteen twenty-one to, um, Mark Kuchar for one thousand one hundred ten dollars and seventy-four cents. Lots of line items for gravel and cemetery. Trash bags, staples, jump drive, book of stamps. I'm not sure of this, okay. Uh, King Arch medals. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what, it looks like all the invoices are attached.
Who's it being paid to?
To Mark. To reimburse him.
So he's paid all of that upfront?
Yeah, so, so there's, uh, let's see, one, two, three, four. Fifteen different things here. For different metals, like for, for welding and things, to, for fence repair, so, okay. So he bought, um, gravel to, for the, to repair the lanes in the cemeteries, uh, three times. He's bought assorted metals to, um, repair, um, refabricate on different fencing over the cemetery. He paid the annual dues to, uh, the New Hampshire Cemetery Association. And then for monument repairs, he bought us some masonry supplies. And then, um, garbage bags, ant spray, and then, yeah, whatever, he had a jump drive for the, his computer and, um, of the cemetery trust's computer, not his, but, and some stamps, so for a grand total of one thousand one hundred ten dollars and seventy-four cents, which would come out of their budget.
So does he get reimbursed and then deposited into the cemetery fund?
He, he, so he's got receipts here for checks and credit cards and all that. He paid out of pocket for, um, for all of these things. It's not the best way to do things, we probably should have a conversation with him that it easier, it would be better if he, like, he went to Pike and bought all this, bought the gravel for the, to repair the roads, the lane, now the lanes in the cemeteries. He got to the same places that, like, George would go get the stuff, so George probably could have gotten a form, and then wouldn't get any delivery fees and something like that, right? So we should work with him on that, I mean.
I just don't think he should be out that kind of money.
Well, I don't either, right? So, I don't think it's fair, that's what, that's my, my larger point, not that I don't trust Mark, it's not fair to him to have to do this.
So he can't write out of the cemetery trust account?
No, he can't. He has to have, um, permission from the select board. But he's come with purchase order before, like, so with the, um,
But it was made out to, like, Green Shadow, Monster, so it's directly to them, this, I mean, I
And you can re, well, you moved it? You moved it, you want a second?
I'll second it, yeah.
We should do that, so we can actually really discuss it, we should have done that, so. So all the documentation is in there, so, but he really shouldn't be
Like, I don't
doing it that way, because he's out of pocket, you know, out of eleven hundred dollars, which is not fair.
No, I don't think so, yeah.
So it's been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? I will, I will have a conversation with him about, about some of the things I'm gonna work on this week. About, um, maybe efficiencies and some ordering and things like that. Working through, um, George for a number of these things, 'cause we may get, like, gravel and things, we may actually get better rates
Right.
from, from Pike, you know, 'cause of the large wand that he buys, or George is already buying some, he can, you know, just, just, uh, work with them. And they're a separate elected board, so I don't wanna
But also that
step on their toes, but
Yeah, but also that he could have them build it to the town
Yeah.
and not pay it out of pocket.
Out of pocket, right, yeah. Yeah, exactly.
That's a lot of money.
I agree. We'll do that. Okay, all those in favor, purchase order fifteen twenty-one, signify as aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right. Hey, Mr. Kuchar, that, for, I'll pass over to somebody, there's a lot on there, so.
I'm calling it supplies.
It's assorted cemetery supplies, I mean, that's all it is, yeah, I mean, it's just, but again, again, he's out eleven hundred dollars out of pocket, which is not fair, so. And it's probably not the best way to do the accounting either, so.
Uh, lastly, a letter from Quamscut Winery L L C. Dear Select Board, we have been approved by Seacoast Eat Local to participate in the winter farmers markets to be held in Rollinsford, November seventeenth, December first, December fifteenth, he's got the, okay, uh, January twenty-sixth, February twenty-third, March twenty-third. Per New Hampshire R S A five four one dash A thirty-nine, we're required to have a letter for, form the town allowing us to sell wine and have wine tastings. Our New Hampshire license number is five six seven zero three zero, a copy is attached. I don't see it, but, but trust. Sincerely, Bill Meserve.
Elliot, he has a signature. Do we have any objection to them? That's Quamscut Winery selling at the, we did this for, um, throwback breweries down there. Who else does it?
As long as it doesn't put any responsibilities on the town, for all it's heard, if they give to a minor.
It's on their license.
Okay. That's all I would be concerned about.
We just have to give their permission to sell within our jurisdiction.
And that's at, at the greenhouse, right?
It's a temporary, yeah. It's only temporary, just for those days, you know? They're not allowed to sell within the town any other days, so.
No objection.
Okey dokey. So when will they, well, just accept this as our request?
Where are you, how are you doing? Snow field?
Snow field, yeah. Uh, can I have a sticky note, I guess? I think we have a, um, template that we've used for others, so. If we do. I will put together for, um, so you've authorized me to sign it, though.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll just put, we have a template, a letter we use for other merchants, so.
And that's it, there's, there's still this flyer in here from last week. The school safety preparedness.
Oh, yeah, we were gonna, um, did, was the chief C C. on it, I think? Well, that's what we're gonna see if he wanted to, or if he doesn't want to. Okay. All righty, anything else on the agenda that, oh, we need to go to non-public to deal with, um,
You want to take community input?
Yeah, we're gonna see for an elderly exemption, so my intention is to deal with the elderly exemption in non-public, come back out and act in it on it in public session. Folks, I'm willing to welcome to wait around, but in the meantime, we'll take community input. We'll, we'll churn right after this, we're not gonna hang up, I promise you. Okay, then, I need a motion to be going to non-public to deal with. An exemption, an elderly exemption?
Yep.
Okay, to discuss an elderly exemption.
I'll move without, into non-public.
Oh, so you wanted them to.
I just want you to know that I did forward the calendar for the Budget Committee to Caroline, I don't know if she sent it to you or not. She has to always send it.
Oh. I don't, I don't, Nancy, I need to go look and see it through the email, I got so many today from her, going back and forth, thank you for doing that.
I did it that, Saturday, I did it that day or sent it to her.
I don't think I got it.
I don't, where is it here?
I just sent it to Caroline, because that was the only one that was in my phone to email to with the town.
I'll, it didn't come through, I'll ask her, I'll ask her to forward it then, thank you for that, that's very helpful. Anything else?
No.
All right, so Denise moves it to be going to non-public session, Miles, seconds, right?
Second.
Denise?
Yes.
Miles?
Yeah.
Mike, yes, we're in non-public session to deal with an elderly exemption, and we bid you all good night. Oh, oh, that's just, so, just on, oh, it's been doing, so we remember about it, I asked, I asked her to leave it on there, I don't know why she didn't put it like that, but, I don't know.
It's definitely not.
Not on hold.